Good morning. Welcome to the County Commission meeting. It's Monday, August 11th, nine o'clock. Please take a minute and put your cellphones on silence. And if you would, stand with me for the invocation. And then Commissioner Williamson, if you would, please lead us in the pledge. Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We pray that you'll watch over us and protect us. I pray that what we say and do here will be pleasing in your sight. We ask these things in Jesus' name and for his sake. Come in. Okay, we'll start on the right. Commissioner Williamson, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have no changes. I just wanted to add that today is early voting. And there's a lot of good men and women, brave men and women, who have protected that right for us to get out there and vote. So there's many of them in the audience and some of them up here on this board. So thank you, and don't forget to vote over the next two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
No additions.
Commissioner Letcher.
No changes.
Mr. Walker. Roy. Mr. Andrews. Baylock. Ms. Bell. Anybody from this end down there? Okay, first off, is the Economic Development Committee Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. First is discussion of acquisition of conservation easement on 46.3 acres closest to NAS Whiting Field from East Gate LLC utilizing Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant and U.S. Navy Readiness and Environmental Protection Integration REPI funding. This has been a project we've been working on for quite some time. A few months ago, we were talking about the possibility of getting 112-acre conservation easement or land acquisition. Since that time, the Navy has worked out a different agreement with the landowner. And I would ask Randy Roy to come up and address this issue for us. Keep in mind, this is a request from the Navy to continue to protect that base and enhance those missions. Mr. Randy Roy, name and address.
Randy Roy, Naval Air Station Whiting Field. Good morning. I think we were, last time we were here, we were talking to the commission about the 112 acres that was under discussion with East Gate LLC. And at that time, there was some questions and queries from the commission and some of the folks in the audience to maybe look at a different option. So went back and talked to the folks that we deal with out of Jacksonville, which is our real estate branch, and looking over the multi-year agreement and the footprint that we're trying to protect. So we were looking at a possibility of doing an industrial easement was one of the questions that came up. So as I was trying to get that to maturity, found out that Whiting Field is usually the one that starts things and actually begins things, like limited access use agreements, the first one in the Navy. This potential with the Site Eight proposal that comes from Escambia County's, first one for the Navy. So industrial easements, I said, well, send me one so I can send it to the county and they can discuss it through the board. But there isn't one. So they told me until it comes to full maturity, maybe we can look at some options. So after a lot of discussion internal to us, we looked at the 112 acres and looked at which is, which part of the property would be the most detrimental to us if it was developed. I know that the zoning over it is M2. And industrial typically is, is compatible, industrial type zoning. M2, as you look at it, as we discussed last time, and I think about four or five years ago when it was rezoned, one of our key questions was, what are you doing with the property and why are you going to such a heavy industrial use? And at that time, it was aviation type activities or facilities are actually included in that portion of the code. Actually, had discussions after the last meeting with Becky Cato and some of the staff and Ms. Jones, and possibly looking at the future and how we can maybe segregate that portion of the code to actually separate those kind of activities out of the M2, sort of like we did with some of the other portions of code, to specify what we can and can't do around the installation. That has not come to full maturity either because that takes some time. So looking at 46 acres, the reason it's 46 acres, we looked at the diagonal piece that would cut the property to actually encumber, action potential zone one, portion of action potential zone two, noise contours and flight tracks, right on the fence line. Basically, the property is on the fence line, is what would be the most valuable to the Navy and if there was an option. So we basically, we're going to dissect the property about 20, 22, 24 acres, diagonal. But kind of unfair to the property owner to kind of wedge them off like that. So we kind of just drew a straight line across that 40-acre piece, so it's a section of land. And actually, would encumber pretty much all of your flight track and your action potential zone one. So what you see before you today is basically a modified version of the 112 acres slimmed down to what is the most critical if we were trying to protect development on the fence line. So with that, I'll take any questions you have, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what's gone on over the last few weeks. I know that they did do a, it's a third-party appraisal. Navy doesn't order it, it's done through the county, the third party. I think Sean Bradley and Associates was used on this. And they basically went back and readjusted the value, did a diminutive value based on the restrictive uses on the property, which there's only one in the easement as written as 1,400 square foot house. And we would also encourage that when we, when the landowner, if they were to choose to do that, we'd probably push it further away from the installation. If you look at it, it has actually a little triangle, small piece. I don't think it's up on the, on the maps, but if it's, if you look in your backup agenda, you'll see that's actually has a little portion on the East Gate Road or Marty Martin Way. And it's because it kind of dwarfs if you just kind of leave like here, here's a little triangle piece, we're not going to. So it was kind of like the 40, comes out, that's why it comes out to 46 acres, I think, in total. So it was a compromise as far as the acreage goes, as far as just trying to be fair and equitable in the acreage section being taken. The balance of the property is something that we had discussed with Ms. Jones and internal to the Navy was, is there a possible option of an industrial-type easement or that version? But it hasn't come to maturity yet. If it does in the future, is that something what the county would like to do or the landowner? I don't know. I know that the initial vision was to use the property for an industrial-type complement to the aviation park. But I believe the landowner is no longer in that business, is basically divesting themselves of the property. So with that said, any questions from me?
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cole, go ahead.
Commissioner Cole, go ahead. Randy.
Yes, sir.
This area of conservation easement, just so we have it on record, what can it be used for? Who can access it? Just for clarification.
It would be, basically, be a restrictive use easement over the entire 46 acres. Nothing would go in it. Basically, 1,400 square foot house could be used for silver culture or farming. And that's about it.
Okay.
It's very restrictive.
And it remains under the control of the, of the owner?
The owner would still have ownership of the parcel as far as, I guess, tax considerations and maintaining the property. But we would definitely have an easement. The Navy would purchase the easement of the property, which is, we're 75% contributors, contributors via the REPI program, which you guys were first on.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. I don't know if you'll necessarily answer this, Randy, or if somebody else can, can answer it. But there was a rezoning from an ag to an M2. And the appraisal obviously was done as it was M2. Would that appraisal have been different if this was at agricultural? What I'm getting at is, you know, we could have problems where people buying property at ag, getting it rezoned, and then selling easements back at a higher value than if it was at ag. So does anybody have any insight on that if this would have changed the value of the property being M2 instead of agriculture?
I imagine, just speaking from experience and dealing with a lot of the REPI projects we worked around the installation, a lot of properties we deal with, one, they have to be a willing seller. Two, I think within the area footprint, even for consideration. And then three, you know, what is the highest and best use of the property and what would be the most detrimental to the installation? Ag is one house per acre typically. So when you're looking at a 60-acre piece, it's off the installation, right underneath the flight track, 60 homes potentially go there barring any wetland issues or, or access or development capability. So when you look at this property, it was unique the way it came about because you have, the basis itself is all of the installations throughout Santa Rosa County, including Whiting Field, are all zone industrial, if you look on the maps. That's why Becky Cato and the sound staff basically went through and said, hey, we're going to restructure this and we're going to create military airport districts because it's not really counted. It's not counted for in the code it is, but it actually complements the comprehensive plan as well. So to answer your question, most of the property that we have dealt with, the Navy doesn't typically do the appraisals, they try to work it through the, through the partner, which is the county in this case, or the state in some other cases, and they basically hire a third party. But all of ours that I remember have been either single-family residential and/or ag. So this is a different, different animal, you're right. It is an M2. And I remember that meeting four or five years ago, I think it was like four years ago. And the, the meeting was, wow, this is an M2, that's, means paper mills, smoke stacks, whole bunch of things go in on a heavy industrial. Industrial is compatible with the Navy, but a smoke stack off the end of the runway is not going to be compatible. So at that time, it was a lot of discussion, why, why is this gentleman going to M2? And the reason is because of the caveat of the words aviation that was in, in the M2 code that allowed them to complement the aviation park, which was the vision to complement that piece of property as it develops. So at that time, if there was some comments made as well of how many aircraft fly over the property, that obviously the highest and most restrictive zoning will always take place, which is the military airport zoning, which is over the property now. But just like anything, a code or, or whatever you want to call it, the county code, Article 11 is what we live by here as far as when it applies to Whiting Field and its protections. It is sound, it is, it is basically 25 years ahead of everybody. But when you're looking at footprint and what you can do and what you can't do in the future for perpetuity purposes forever, or as long as the installation's there in that footprint, those 20 to 40 acres right there on the fence line is probably the most critical for us if we were to have development in that area. The only other area that would be developed in that similar vein would be the aviation park, which is the industrial park that's being proposed once a tax rate goes in. And then you'll have complimentary kind of activities going there where a guy would land, but outside of the action potential zones as well. I don't know if I answered your question straight up, but you're right, 112 acres at M2 would probably be higher than 112 acres at ag. Just, this is just Randy Roy telling you what I have dealt with.
You, you mentioned something about wetlands. Is there any portion of that 46 acres that's wetlands where it would not be usable?
Right on, right on our fence line, we have a huge drainage ditch that actually goes through the middle of the property. If you look at the industrial, if you look at the easement as well, it just sits right through it. And on our property, we actually have a wetland area right adjacent to this property across the fence line.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have speakers lining up. Mr. Young, name and address.
Jim Young, 5049 Basin Avenue, managing member of East Gate, the item on the agenda. Commissioner Williamson, as to value, if you look back through the records of the conservation easements and/or fee simple acquisitions under this program, which fee simples were very few numbers. This property was originally ag, which the key in the value is it had, that means it had 121 housing unit component. When you look back at similar properties, you will find that those conservation easements on acres of that large where you could put up to, there was one transaction you could, you could put up to 300 housing units on. And the appraisal on that is less than this. By taking, when you look at the value of the conservation easement as a buffering for encroachment with land that has a housing component due to its zoning in excess of 120 units, I could have easily, if I chose to, put 120 units of housing on that. Now, the only restriction I would have had, and there was a site plan developed for that, was to cluster those units. But the value of those 120 housing units would have still applied under the ag zoning. I rezoned the M2 to pigtail, if you will, on any opportunity of the aviation park. That was eight or nine years ago. In fact, the issue of value is, as far as conservation easement value goes, that property is worth less than it would have been under ag because of the housing component. And there's records, you've got plenty of records to go back and research and find that to be true. Okay? So as far as value is concerned, this value is reduced from what it would have been as a value of a conservation easement because of the housing component no longer exists. Okay? And especially to that density level. So if we assume they're equal in value, to say that, now, true enough, in the outside marketplace, in the private marketplace, rezoning an ag piece of property to an M2 and receiving that zoning, the expectations of the applicant would be that the value would go up because of the type of commercial industrial development that could go on it. But as far as the value of the conservation easement, there's more value by getting houses out of there than there is putting commercial development. Does that answer your question? Okay?
Yes, sir, that does.
Okay. Just tried to clarify, thank you.
And I appreciate that. I think the questions are good sometimes. Sometimes we just, you know, go through without asking questions. And a new member on this board, it's always good to get insight from our public and from our other commissioners. And sometimes we just need to throw something, we need to talk about it. I think that's good for the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. How much is this going to cost the county?
Ms. Cantu, it's not going to cost the county anything. Will be 75% of that conservation easement will be paid for using Navy funds. And the other 25% will be paid for through the county using state military base protection grant.
Okay, so how much is this going to cost then somebody? Whoever it is that's paying for it, how much is it going to cost?
$311,000, excuse me, $310,000.
$310,000?
That's correct.
And what's the value of the property today? Taxable value, is that, is that the way you normally address the value?
The value is, the appraisals are based on the highest and best use of property.
So what is the value of the property based on whatever method you're going to use?
I'd have to look at the appraisals. Roy, do you have the appraisals?
But they don't have that yet, right?
Yes, ma'am. What would be acquired would be the, a conservation easement.
That's what you're working on now, right?
Yes.
In order to get an easement?
That's correct.
So how can you value it before you get it?
The appraiser values the conservation easement as a restriction on the property, the fee simple property.
So what is that value?
$310,000.
And how much does the property owner pay in taxes on that property? What's his taxable value?
I'm, I'm not sure. You'd have to ask the property owner.
Is the property owner here?
We don't, we don't get into how much taxes are being paid. If the Navy needs it to protect the base, that's our mission.
Well, what I'm interested in is, is the increase in value of this property just based on the county getting an easement for it? Is that, is that a logical question?
I think to try to answer your question is, once that easement is placed over the 43 acres, 46 acres, the taxes should go down because the use of that property now is restricted.
So that means a loss to the citizens of Santa Rosa County based on taxes, right?
That means the taxes will be reduced on that 46 acres. But you have to compare that to what is the value of Whiting Field to our economy, and that's $1.2 billion economic impact every year. So that's always the trade-off.
But we have no guarantee that changing the value of this property or changing the use of this property is going to make any difference to the Navy when they start closing bases, right?
Yes, ma'am, because encroachment is one of the top reasons that bases close throughout the country. And this is appropriate time for me to read a portion of what Rear Admiral Alexander said a few years ago when he visited Milton. Rear Admiral Alexander praised his perfect union. And at the time, he was the admiral in charge of Southeast Command, which is all the military bases in the southeast. He said, "If Santa Rosa County were an available girl and the Navy a single guy, they surely would be going steady." The relationship between Whiting Field and the county really is a model for the way we want to do business in the Navy. "To show our passion for our military base and men and women who serve our country," said Commissioner Salter. "Alexander praised Santa Rosa County for being a community that welcomes members of the military and their families for working to prevent encroachment at Whiting Field. The buffering initiative have set the standards for us. And I would say across the Navy," Alexander said, "we've got some challenges out there across the region, but here's the key. If we, if we could bottle up the way you have done things here, we'd all be better off for it." So to answer your question, as we go forward, and sure there's going to be another round of base closing in the future, it's going to be important for us to be able to show what we've done to protect and enhance that mission.
I was stationed at Ellison Field back in the late 60s, and there was a lot of rumors that Ellison Field was going to close. And everybody says, oh, no, no, Ellison Field would never close because this is the only place to do helicopter training. Just a few months after, and, and they started spending a lot of money on the base fixing it up. Just after I left, they closed the base. There's no guarantee that the Navy is going to stay there. I understand your, your thinking that that is going to have some effect, but it doesn't necessarily.
All my years of working with the military and in life in general, I've learned there's no such word as never or ever. You just do what you think is in the best interest and, and hope that you're more competitive than other people.
So what I'm asking you is, what's the value of the property now? How much is it going to increase the value to the owner? Can you answer that?
I think Mr. Roy just answered your question, it's $310,000.
But he also said that was the value of the property. That's the same thing. There's no change?
I don't, I just, I-
There's no change in the value of the property by making this easement on there?
It's going to reduce the highest and best use of that property because you can't develop it.
Okay, I would ask, I would ask that you tell us how much per acre that's going to cost?
I don't have my calculator with me.
Anybody have a calculator? How much per acre? That's, that's the way most people judge property.
Ms. Cantu, let me just say this. We can question this thing to, to the minute point, but it's what the Navy has requested from the landowner to help protect that base. And there's a possibility that Whiting may expand in the future. And this is a key piece of land to that expansion.
Who owns this property?
Ms. Cantu, Ms. Cantu, you're cycling back through your questions, and we'll help you understand it, but we need to get this meeting on down the road. If you would get with the staff after this, we'll go over it best we can.
I have two questions.
Well, go ahead.
Who owns the property? You said Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. We've covered that area. And someone has just calculated a number, it's about $6,700 an acre. So, I mean, we, we've done our honest, dead-level best to satisfy your questions, and you keep recycling them. We'll help you forward, but we need now to go ahead with this meeting.
Okay, the next question is, what can the owner use the property for?
He sold his rights for industrial development. He retains the other rights. We've answered that one too. Now with all due respect-
No, sir, I haven't heard the answer to that question.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Roy explained that in his opening remarks. Nothing can be done with that property except grow trees, raise cattle, farming activities, those type of things.
So the owner can't get any, any value out of the property by using it? Is that what you're telling me?
No, ma'am. He can use it as agriculture-type activity.
Thank you.
Jim Young, 5049 Basin Avenue. I just want to make some quick comments that might accelerate this along. The, first of all, all of Ms. Cantu's questions- First of all, all of Ms. Cantu's questions can be answered in the backup. Any details that are not in the backup, as far as copy of the appraisals, are available from the county attorney. Those are... It's all public information. So all that information is there for anybody that wants to see it. And your question was very applicable. When I left and you were asking those questions, Commissioner Williamson, I didn't want to leave you. Sometimes the way I speak may be not as pleasant as it should be, but I'm an easy guy, okay? And as far as the wetlands issue is concerned, there are no wetlands on the property that I own, okay? I know that wasn't a major question, but just for clarification. There's a drainage ditch down the middle of it that's owned by the Navy, and that's where the water goes from there. So there's no wetlands on the property. That's the point. Very quickly, this started as a 112-acre conservation easement proposal. It was brought before the board. It was basically tabled. If I misstate something, please correct me. The county wanted some options. There were several meetings with the Navy and the county, and it was derived as coming up with the options. Obviously, option number one would assume would be on the table, but it was not acceptable or nobody wanted to do that. As far as putting conservation easement with a whole 112 acres, they saw that they could reduce that to the APZ-1 zone area, accidental zone area, by taking a forty-six acre parcel. Another appraisal was done. That's all online. The same appraiser has appraised 100% of all of these activities of the thirty-five or thirty-six hundred acres that has been done, except for one because he had a personal problem with the appraiser. So there's consistency there. I laid out two other options on the table. And when I say I put another option on the table because there was a question at the original meeting about fee simple, the appraisal on the land for the 112 acres is $900,000. I signed an agreement that I would take a fee simple deal. My motivation at this point in time, if somebody's worried about the motivation, I think we've asked... We addressed the values, and you're concerned about M2 to ag and all that sort of stuff. I don't know about the rest of you, you know, I'm fixing to be on Medicare, and I'm also so involved in about 27 different LLCs. And my boss, who is my wife, has told me to start getting rid of some of this stuff as quickly as possible. And so I'm taking every avenue I can on all my holdings to try to reduce that. I know that's not applicable to this conversation, except we all got one of them. I can address any questions the board may have. If you don't, that's all I got to say.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vernon Compton, 5149 Santa Rosa Street. And Commissioner Salter, just to add to what you shared with everyone, this project really is a national model, the encroachment base buffering program around Whiting Field, not just with the Navy, but really whenever you travel and you talk about protecting bases, this is highlighted, this project here. And it's because of the number of partners that have been brought to the table to work on it and how the county and the Navy have leveraged funds to actually protect the base. One of the important items early on was tourism and extending the Blackwater Heritage State Trail. So one part of that is piecing together enough land so that trail could actually be extended. And the county and the Navy, state have done such a good job on the east side of the base. Really, this is the last piece of property that's needed to be able to start working on extending or adding a component of trail around the base. But that would have to be a part of the easement itself. So I just wanted to make sure that that is part of the consideration. Also, with Mr. Young and moving forward, is making sure that we acquire that right, too, so that that is a potential tourism project benefit to the public and to the base in the future is having that trail.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Vernon, I don't recall anywhere in this contract this property would remain, you know, Mr. Young's or his LLC's property. I don't remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, Roy or somebody that do... Is there an easement for any type of trail or bicycle path, walking path across this?
The document doesn't give an interest... Or doesn't convey an interest that would be a trail. It restricts the reserved rights to one residential drilling, to fencing, establishing retention detention pods, agriculture and farming, passive recreational use, civic culture and use of natural resources, hunting. I mean, it's a restriction, it's not a grant.
Yeah, and so, Mr. Young, if you... I don't want to slow this up any, but can we get a verbal commitment to...
The 1,320 feet that abuts the NES Whiting Field fence on the west side is the proposed last section of the trail that will connect it to Marty Martin Way. And I will be more than happy to add that language to the restricted covenants with Randy Roy and the county attorney and put that... Make sure it's specific in the language. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else have a comment before we move on to another issue?
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We have a new county attorney, and I think if there's any disclosures that need to be made by him concerning this applicant, I think it would be appropriate at this time.
I have... I represented the East Gate LLC in the rezoning in 2010. I don't represent him now. I haven't been involved in the negotiations in regard to the purchase of the restrictive easement. So there are no disclosures other than that.
Okay. Thank you very much. History of this property, and let me say this, there's been a lot of acquisitions, and the overall thought of protecting this base is something that I certainly support. The J-LUS study in 2002, 2003 kicked off. We told the world, the world, the whole planet, that we were interested in buying property. This property was purchased in 2006, many years after the J-LUS study came out. Of note also, this property was rezoned without an active project on the table. A little bit unusual. For those of us who come to planning board meetings from time to time, we see people come to ask for a rezoning because we're going to build a house, we want to put a business. We are ready to do something with this property. In this case, there was no plans. I am reminded of former Commissioner Williamson, who at that meeting said, "You can rezone it to whatever you want to today, but until you have a legitimate project on it, the zoning really won't count." That's what we do to every other citizen that wants a rezoning. They have to have a project on it. Yet this one did not. A little concerning to me. I'd like to talk about taxes for a moment. All taxes are citizens' taxes, whether it comes from the pool of taxes in Santa Rosa County or whether it comes from the federal government. We, the people, paid into that tax. So let's don't get confused on that. It cost us. I'm not saying it's not a cost that we shouldn't pay, but it's taxes just the same. When we look at this piece of property and it being in the vicinity of our aviation park, and the one thing that I continue to hear out of board members here is the importance of economic development, and I certainly agree with you, it seems to me that we would want to encourage the type of development that would go along with aviation interest. This property is, I think, in a prime place for that. It's got a road in front of it. It's near infrastructure. I just think this specific piece of property should stay on the tax rolls and allow private enterprise to take some action on it. Because of all of those reasons, you know, I rise in opposition on this, and I'd encourage the commissioners not to grant this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment, we'll move on. Here again, I agree with what Jerry said, and that was one of the reasons that I suggested and support the 46.3 acres versus the entire 112. It keeps some of the property available for industrial acceptable development. The 46.3 acres, as Randy Roy said, sits underneath accident potential zones one and two, and even property within the Whiting Aviation Park where it's underneath accident potential zones. We cannot build a building underneath it. We can put a parking lot in there or some type of tarmac, but if it's underneath an APZ one or two, you can't build anything. So that's why I support the 46.3 acres, and I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole. One comment, if I could, Commissioner Salter, before we move it. Could we... Mr. Young was good enough to allow accessibility for the bicycling path, and I appreciate that. Could we also include a caveat where the balance of the property that's marked subject on our map have accessibility to Marty Martin Way across that... You know, we got down here to that wedge right there. And if we take that wedge out, I don't want to have to come back later and say, "Well, now we can't get to this subject property that we could put a hanger on or whatever." So hopefully I explain...
Let me try to... Jim Young, 5049 Basin Avenue. The 112-acre parcel property has approximately... And it's an approximation because it's 340, so that's 1320. So it's 3,960 feet on Marty Martin's Way. It intersects... And then there's a T-intersection on what I used to call Red Bug Black Road that's now Whiting Field Circle. So it sits on a corner. The drainage ditch, concrete drainage ditch that NES Whiting Field owns, there's 17 acres, almost 18 acres of land from Marty Martin Way to the ditch, okay? And it's on an angle. And then fronting Whiting Field Circle, which obviously has power, it has sewer and water, you'll have... The remainder parcel on that side's 92 and a half acres for a number. And the 46-acre parcel under consideration today starts at the fence and comes easterly. So, you know, whatever 46 is from 112, 75, 80 acres left. And if you will have public access, when I say public access, you've got an improved road with services on Whiting Field Circle. And maybe that doesn't answer your question, Commissioner Cole?
I'm just... You're right, you do have a way to carry things. I mean, you've talked plenty of times, so you got to read between Jim's lines. Now, I'm going to make it real simple. Do you not think that it would be better to have the balance of the property have accessibility to Marty Martin Way, especially since our industrial park, our Santa Rosa County Aviation Industrial Park, would be straight across the street? I could see a benefit...
If you wanted... I think what you may be driving at is that the conceptual plan for the aviation park has an entrance. That entrance could be lined up toward the narrow end of this triangle on Marty Martin Way.
Just leave an easement where from Marty Martin Way to the subject property at the narrowest point, we'd have accessibility.
Yes. In other words, you'll have to cross the ditch, which is not a big deal. You're asking me, you're asking me, will I allow access to line up that?
Correct.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
And we pretty much nailed that down with his last statement as well, that he's willing to work with the attorney if I understood Mr. Young correctly to get that included.
But that was down here.
Yeah. That's okay. That's that corner right there. All right, Mr. Chairman, are you...
Mr. Chairman, here again, I move this to Thursday, including the nature trail easement without objection.
I object.
Hearing none, it passes.
I object.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment.
You mean that he gets to speak again, but I don't get to speak again?
Yes, ma'am. He's an elected official. He's part of this board. He's conducting this hearing. Excuse me. You asked me a question.
Mr. Young is... Is Mr. Young a member of the board?
Mr. Young is the owner, and he's done his dead-level best to answer the questions and as patiently as we can.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready to hear it?
I am. Are you ready to state it?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East. You're telling us that you expect the taxpayers to pay $6,000 an acre for pasture land. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, let me respond to that, please.
Yes, sir, please.
The answer is yes. However, like Mr. Cooley said, federal taxes, state taxes, we all pay them. If we don't use those taxes in Santa Rosa County, they'll end up going somewhere else in Florida, or they will end up going to Fort Rucker, Alabama, Corpus Christi, Texas, to enhance their bases, and we're doing nothing for ours. So we need to keep our taxes local.
So you mean that it's all right to waste other taxpayers' money so long as it's not your own?
This is not wasting. This is protecting our largest industry in Santa Rosa County.
That's your story, but that's not the way I see it.
Well, there's nothing else I can say to you. Thank you.
Are you through with your committee report? We have another item to go.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item. Discussion of application for 2015 Florida Defense Task Force Grant. This grant is still in the making. All I want to do today is ask for a placeholder for Thursday. Sheila Harris, Randy Roy, and some of us are working on that potential project. This will be from the Florida Defense Task Force Grant, and we'll have something hopefully by Thursday. If not, we'll withdraw it. So I would move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next is Administrative Committee. We have 15 items. Item number one is discussion of the comparative cost for three sites for the proposed judicial facility as presented by H.L.K. Incorporated. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. This is a culmination of a lot of work with a lot of people here in the county, our team. And what I'm going to try and do here is to bring all this together and keep it as clear and concise as I can. So we'll go through just... And again, you've seen earlier reports on this project, but go through here just an overview of the various... The three sites that we've looked at, the comparative cost estimates, a project budget. What does that mean on top of the construction cost? And then floor plans, some images of what we propose in the building should look like, and then understand what the next steps for us and the county are. The three sites, and I'd just like to reiterate, we've submitted a number of reports to you over the last eight to nine months. I just want to make sure that each of those reports we build on. And as we develop the reports, sometimes some of the information changes. We get new information. We fine-tune them. So this is that culmination of those reports. So the Byram property on Highway 90 is 19.3 acres. P Ridge is 18.3 acres, and the downtown Milton site is about five acres. The reason that the Byram property and the P Ridge property are slightly different sizes, even though the site plans are pretty much exactly the same, is that there's an access road that is part of that property to get to the property behind the courthouse. That's what makes up that acre of difference in the site. The parking count on the Byram and the P Ridge property is 500 cars. That's based on the zoning requirement for a building of that size. On the downtown Milton site, it's 225 new spaces. I'd like to point out, when you build the courthouse, there isn't 500 new cars that show up that day that weren't showing up before at the courthouse. So the courthouse downtown parks everybody pretty much at the moment. In a downtown environment, shared parking is absolutely the norm. People use parking lots around it, the streets around it. So the 225 there is... the two hundred and twenty-five there is our new parking spaces on top of what's in the, in the community. In this planning, and we talked about growth into the future, and we're talking about a building here that's gonna outlive all of us and probably our children, to plan in the ability to expand this project if we, if you needed to in twenty or fifty years' time. On the two bigger pieces of property, Byram and P Ridge, there is room built into the plans to expand the courthouse. That's building a physical addition that would add courtrooms onto that building. You couldn't do that on the Milton site with the site plan. There was also a provision in the plan for future, probably shorter-term growth of the clerk's office, probation, and archiving, and that could be accommodated on all three sites. We'd recommend that the historic courthouse, once you vacate it, is then looked at as a future government use and could house courts functions, county functions, even city functions, to keep that building active. Right. I'm gonna go through all of these numbers, and I, and I know all of you have jumped to the bottom line on the last page. So, what I want to make sure I do here is, is explain to you which numbers are in that we've prepared in a lot of detail based on a lot of design work or engineering work, and which numbers we've got from other people, i.e. the county staff, which numbers are, are very solid and which ones have contingency built in, built into them. Land cost, as we understand it, zero cost to the county of that land, the Byram property. On the P Ridge site, the one point four million dollars is the, the, the money that is allocated, I believe, in the, in the contract for sale, but that includes the property in front of the courthouse site, the two out parcels that the county wants to maintain control over for future development, whether the county does it themselves or sells it on. So, that one point four million actually is for the twenty-two acres of property, not for the eighteen that we were, that the courthouse sits on. On the downtown site, we don't have access to the cost of the land per se for those parcels the county doesn't own. So, I worked with Hunter Walker, and the assessed value on that property is just under eighty thousand dollars. What it would sell for, that's not my expertise. Site development on all of these. So, if, if, if you remember, we went back to try and make this the best apples-to-apples comparison that we could. We've designed the same courthouse on each site, even, even though on the Milton site, we actually do what's called a mirror it, and, and we change where some of the entrances and the access is. It is fundamentally the same building so that we're comparing the same, sorry, the same cost of construction in each place. So, site development then is everything from the ground floor slab down. So, parking, utilities, landscape, stormwater retention, all of those things. So, at the Byram property, it's about four point seven million dollars. There are, a piece of that is that access road that gets you to the back of the property, and then also the modifications on Highway ninety to get in and out of the site are fairly, fairly extensive for required there. At P Ridge, it's four point three million dollars. The difference is slightly less traffic modifications to be done there because some, some of that's already in place. At the Milton site, it's a smaller site. We're obviously not parking as many cars, not dealing with as much stormwater, three point two million dollars. The, what happens then, though, is the foundation system at the Milton site and the ability to get the building above the flood plain costs money. So, de-watering for when you construct it would be, would be more intensive on the Milton site. We have site fill to get the building up to eleven feet above, above sea level. And then the, the pile foundations that we went through in a lot of detail back in two thousand and two, we've, we've gone through and re-engineered that. But that's a, that's basically a premium of one point nine million dollars. The building, a lot of detailed work there. We've got very detailed plans at this stage. We went, worked with our structural engineers, our mechanical, electrical plumbing engineers, went through and described the systems in the building. A building that is certainly very long life, easy to maintain. We're looking to it be very energy efficient. It, it's, as we've said, it's a long-life building. It's, it's a major commitment, and we need to spend the money correctly. Thirty-four, thirty-four point five million dollars equates to two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, which, you know, higher than it was in two thousand and eight, but market's picking up. But two twenty a square foot is very reasonable for a county courthouse in this market. So, that gives us those numbers for the three sites. As you can see, they're really not that far apart as total numbers. That's the construction cost, really, on those, construction and land costs on those projects. That, that would be what you would ultimately sign a contract with a general contractor to build the building for you. The other piece of this, if, if the county is looking to fund all of this out of, out of an individual bond or sales tax referendum that you need to consider are what we call, everybody calls project costs. They're those costs above the cost of construction which you fund. They, they need to be included. I just want to reinforce, these costs apply to any of the sites. There is really no difference in any of them. It would be applied. And I'll go through each, each of these line items so you understand. Two million dollars for F F and E. That's all the, that's everything that's loose in the building. Clerk's office, state attorney, public defender, all use systems furniture. All of that has to be bought. It's all, in a county courthouse, all bought off state contracts. There is a, a very precise way of going through that process, and that identifies that. We have assumed in this exercise, because we're not, we're talking about a building that's four years out yet till you occupy, that everything is new. We, we, if we got into more detailed design and, and could, could work with people, you could understand what was, could be reused, et cetera. But for this exercise, given that this number is consistent everywhere, we've assumed everything is new. We've benched that again, benchmarked that against the county courthouse in Manatee, county courthouse in Hillsborough County. You know, these are very, very reasonable and supportable numbers. Information technology, audio, visual, electronic security, looks like a big number. We, we do a lot of this work. We have a very, a couple of very good consultants that work with us and, and work with those same counties. This is for a complete building with everything you would need to run a efficient courthouse, clerk's operation, government building, assuming you're not attaching or connecting to anything you already have. Case in point, this includes a whole new phone system in that building. If you were able to connect in four years' time to an existing county phone system and switch, that number changes significantly. It includes security electronics, that's card access systems, surveillance cameras, all the detention locking systems for the sheriff's piece of it, and, and monitoring of those systems. It includes courtroom presentation technology and the sound systems in the courtroom, the court reporting system. The, the state is moving much more widely to the use of digital video court reporting to save staff costs. All, all of this technology investment is in saving staff costs. It's a big number. The permits and impacts fees, I have a hundred thousand dollars there. It could be two hundred thousand. It could be fifty. It, it's something that until you select a site and move forward, it's, it's a fairly variable number, but in the scheme of things, it's not that big of a number. What that does, you add all those numbers up, it's, it's fundamentally a fifty million dollar project. The, the point I'd like to make is that what this is, this is telling me at least, is that the decision where we could, we could get in and look at every line item in, on every piece of paper, and there's a lot of them, the decision at the end of the day is, is selecting the location that works best for the community and the county. And, and that's, that's not something I have to do, but that's, that's for you to work through. So, those, those are the numbers. As I said, on plans, we have much more detailed plans than these that each of the users have seen. There comes a point in a courthouse plan development when you stop publishing the plans to the public. That's for safety reasons and security reasons. We, we show every secure door and secure lock in the building. We show the alternative means of getting out for the judges, those kinds of things. We, if you don't, we help you keep that out of the public eye. It's not, there's too many movies made with people looking at plans of, of secure buildings. But we've worked very closely with all the users, got a lot of input. As I said, we've got detailed plans that show everything they need. And some images of the courthouse. Again, we've talked about a brick and precast concrete building that is durable, will last longer than, well longer than all of us. We've also specified that all this brickwork is built over a concrete block backup. It may say, may seem like a little detail. You see a lot of buildings built in metal studs these days and over. We want this to go a hundred years. We, we don't want it to be wobbling in the wind. So, some views here of the courthouse entry. It's a two-story entry that, that houses the security equipment and the screening and gives people coming into the courthouse the ability to see where they're going and get to that high-volume courtroom and jury assembly very easily. So, and it also, from a security point of view, allows the sheriff's personnel to look out of the lobby to see who's coming and what's coming. It's very important. So, just some views around, around the project. So, that is the highlight of the presentation. I'm sure there's gonna be some questions, and I'm happy to help answer them.
Thank you very much. Just, and the, and the number is probably small enough not to be material, but are these numbers net of the considerations from the city of Milton?
Yes, they are. We, 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 and the city has, and, and a number of people have contacted us with things that could help the project. We, we chose to try and keep everything on a level playing field and understand that if you move forward, once you select a site, then there is a very detailed look at incentives, impact fees, detailed design. I mean, there's, there's a year's worth of detailed design which could help, you know, save on some of those, so, some of those costs when we get more information.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. All right. So, we'll open this up to the board. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Duncan, great presentation. This is exactly what I think we, where we've been needing to get to, and I know you-
Thank you.
-put a lot of time into it. So, can I safely say, or can you safely say, that these numbers that we're seeing on this, on the page that says budget, project budget, would be the numbers that would be a most significant or, or basically a worst-case scenario, highest-case scenario?
Yeah. Could, could you put the presentation back up? Because I think I had another slide. I just wanted to make sure.
That, that page right there, we-
No, hang on. I just-
There you go. Did we start telling?
Sorry, just bear with me.
Okay.
No, you're right. Yeah. So, if, if you, if you want to go out and say, I need a pot of money to do this project-
Yes.
-the only thing that you'd have to consider is how much, we have included contingency in the construction numbers and the site numbers-
Yes.
-in the F F and E number and the technology number.
Okay.
For things that we don't know about today, we've included escalation at about two and a half percent a year until you, you take that to the midpoint of construction. We're all hoping that we don't get any big bumps in that.
Sure.
Is it, would it be good to have a little bit of extra contingency there that if you don't need it, you don't use it, and it gets left unspent? Always.
But my question is, are we safe at this meeting to start telling our citizens, there's what it's gonna cost you? I did some quick math. If we, if we pull in twelve million dollars a year on a sales tax, which I think is a little conservative, hopefully conservative, that would take us out four years, approximately four years. And, and this is where we need to get to. This is the questions I'm hearing from citizens, how much, where, you know, so we can narrow it down to one of the three locations and let them make that choice. And the other thing is that, you know, we're constantly hearing from them, and I'm, I'm promising them there won't be any, you know, you won't see a next page that says, okay, we're gonna add a couple of roads, or we're, there's no gonna be any wish list on the backside of this. And I know you have no control over that, but I just-
No, and, and that's always the thing, Commissioner, that, you know, knowing everything we know today, going ahead with that is fine. As, as we have learned through this process over the last year, things change. And, 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 you know, we've had a good level of communication with all the user groups on their expectations. I think we've had good communication with you about expectations. But if, say you had, you know, significant population growth and, and caseload growth over and above what everybody's anticipating, and you chose to build out one of those out parcels, it's gonna cost you more money.
Sure. I think everybody understands that, but we're at, I think we've already, from what I remember of previous discussions, where, you know, this square footage is, is not just what we need. It's a little, it's a percentage over what we currently-
Correct. And, and we have done projects in the past where the county says it's fifty million dollars, then we will work with everybody to make it fifty million dollars. And if that means, you know, some tough choices for some people in there to make changes, that's what we do. You know, in Miami-Dade County and Hillsborough County, we were working on fixed budgets, and both those projects came in under budget. Part of that was due to the economy at the time, but the counties in both cases were either able to spend that money on something else or upgraded some things in the building that they hadn't originally anticipated. So.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any of the other commissioners? Commissioner Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you came up with the numbers for the building, and you based it on other projects, were those, just, I'm just trying to get the idea. I bid a lot for being an electrical contractor. A lot of times I put a little more into things just knowing that I'd rather go to somebody and say, hey, the job ended up a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars cheaper than, than what I thought, instead of having to battle with them at the end, purchase orders or anything like that. And so, the projects that you looked at, were they the last ten years, the last five years? Because the economy is getting better, and as the economy gets better, the cost of doing business and people doing construction's gonna go up a little bit. I'm bidding prices a little higher now than I did three years ago, because three years ago, I needed the work. I'm turning it down now. So, did, I'm sure you took that into consideration, but those buildings that you based it on, what kind of timeframe did you look at?
Okay. Hillsborough County Plant City was opened two and a half years ago. Miami-Dade County is about to open this year. But, but you should know, we, we got an independent cost estimator as part of our team to do a cost estimate. So, not only is he checking against rates from subcontractors, he's also looking at historical data, benchmarking that. So, this is, this is not a collection of bids from engineers or subcontractors. It's an estimate. And, and I think the point we're making is that these are all comparative costs. They all come out about even. Could we get into the electrical number and shave a hundred thousand dollars of it? Probably. But that requires a lot of work. We, we have assumed that you would, this is important, sorry, that you would bid the project, that this would not be construction managed, that you would bid it. Now, we might, we might recommend to you that you bid it to a selected group of pre-qualified contractors who have proven competent to build this kind of a building. But it should be competitively bid. We believe that you'll get the best value that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else say anything they'd like to ask before we move on? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Item number two, and, and this requires no action. This is just a presentation. Item number two is discussion of proposed ordinance regarding local governmental infrastructure sales tax for the construction. And this is a, a legal I and T to be dotted. Mr. Andrews, would you please?
The, the form for an ordinance that imposes a local option sales tax is pretty well set forth in, in Florida statutes. This is a document that reflects what has been passed previously by Santa Rosa County. It requires a up or down vote, yes or no, for the one cent sales tax or against the one cent sales tax that comes directly out of the, of the Florida statutes. The, the statute requires that a general description of the projects be, be placed in there and a timeframe. The document that's before you has a, is for the construction of a new, new courthouse at a location to be determined by referendum, and it says that the tax will be levied for a period of four years.
And I have discussed earlier with, with- And I have discussed earlier with, with the attorney, and I've made a note at the end of item number three, but we need to modify that language and, and we'll need to vote on it because we've all promised the public that it would be a sunset item, and it needs to say that in, in this document. Commissioner Lynch, would you wish to address that?
Thank you. The, absolutely needs to have the sunset on it. The proposed ballot language does. It says, shall a one-cent sales, shall a one-cent sales tax be levied to fund the construction of a new courthouse at a location to be determined, to be determined by referendum. The tax will be levied for a period of four years.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Andrews? Or do we need, where does it need to go to make sure that, that this is legally sunsetted with the provision that, you know, four years or upon completion or, or upon retirement of the debt?
This would, would indicate that the maximum period for, that it could be levied would be for four years. The, the language could be modified to say that, or until the debt for the construction-
Would you pull your mic a little closer, please, sir?
I think we could add language that said, that would make it explicit that it would be terminated upon retirement of the debt.
Okay. I would like, I'd like us to see that, and we'll open up and discuss that particular subject right now. Commissioner Lynch, would you like to follow on with your thoughts before we move to other commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Section three, length of imposition of local sales tax, says expressly that the local sales tax imposed hereby shall be effective for four years from the date of levy. Under the state statutes regarding imposition of a sales tax or local option sales tax, we can only levy on a calendar year basis. January, or January 1 to December 31, is my understanding. So, we can't, we can't leave it open in that, you know, we'll, we'll levy it for four years or until it's paid off. We can't say that. We have to have a specific number of years in there, and it can't be, it can't terminate on June 1st. It has to terminate on December 31st.
My concern is that we get it sunsetted in clear enough language that the layman can understand it, and I include myself in that because I'm certainly not an attorney. But I want to see it in clear enough English that the doubt is removed in the public's mind, that there is a date certain that that tax goes away.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and maybe that's the answer. Maybe on the, the ballot question, instead of just saying the tax will be levied for a period of four years, we say the tax will be levied from January 1, 2015, and shall terminate by operation of law on December 31, 2019?
January 1.
December 31, January 15, 16, 17, 18. Actually, December 31 of 18, it would terminate. And if that language would be acceptable-
I think that would be fun.
-Mr. Andrews could check on that next week.
Okay. All right. And we need to, we need to, to, a motion to modify that, I think. Are we okay where we are?
I think we need to stay with the language that we have at this point. I think we can, we have more leeway in regard to the, the resolution, the non-binding referendum. I think we can make it more explicit in regard to those. But the provisions of the, of the ordinance imposing the tax have already been reviewed by the Department of Revenue and signed off by them.
Okay.
So, I think we need to stay with that language.
All right. Then I move, I move approval of item number two, discussion of proposed ordinance regarding local infrastructure sales tax. Move, we move this to Thursday without objection.
Actually, if I could just point out one quick thing. It's already on the, this was the ordinance that you, that it's on for public hearing Thursday. I just, I just wanted to be sure that we discussed that. Typically, you don't discuss the public hearing items before the public hearing. Just given the, the interest in this, so just to know, it's there, and it will be under your public hearing time at 9:30.
And just to, just to verbalize the obvious, in case someone came away with, with a different impression, all we've done is moved this to Thursday. We have not approved it. We've just carried it forward after we have validated that it's in the proper format with, with the county's attorney and with our commissioner, who is also an attorney. So, that's all we've done. Yes, a few questions. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Romi Wyatt, 5775 Arnar Lane, Milton. When the project initially came out, everybody was ballparking about 35, I mean, 35 million and saying it would take about three, three and a half years. And so, now we're looking at a five-year loss. Is that accurate?
Four years.
Four years? Okay. And what, what if the costs go over that? And also, what if the costs go under that?
Yeah, the 35 was the construction cost itself. That was, that was, the estimate 35 million didn't include, that was just the building. So, those other costs.
So, the excess are, you know?
Yeah.
I'm specifically asking if the costs go over what the lost is or, or under it. What's going to be done?
If it goes over, the county will be responsible. The county can only collect this sales tax for four years. Whatever difference there is, one way or the other, will be, be the county.
And let me just specify why I'm asking, because the projections for the lost are $10 to $12 million annually. What if you only collect 40 million over the course of four years? Thank you.
You're going to be $10 million short, according to Mr. Boyd's figures, if that's right.
We start moving desks and chairs from one building to the other and phone systems and everything like that to-
Yeah, that's right.
-to try to keep those costs down.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Do you wish to address this item?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East. Can you tell the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County how much it's going to cost each individual person based on the amount of taxes you have to?
Well, since it's based on the sales tax, the, the money is raised from a sales tax-
Right.
Then, then you would have to compute it for yourself, but it would be your disposable income that you spend on taxable items, which excludes food, medicine, and those sorts of things. And it would be a rather busy Saturday afternoon computation, but you could compute that for yourself.
As the representatives of the taxpayers, I would expect you to be able to tell me, as a taxpayer in Santa Rosa County, it's going to cost you approximately this much money for this new-
Ms. Cantu, through the chair. Sandra, it's really based on, on your taxes. Not, not on your taxes, but on your, what you spend. If, if I go out, if we approve this and next month I go out and buy a new car, then my portion may be a lot larger than yours if you don't next year buy a new car. So, it's going to be based on, on your purchases per individual taxes. So, I, so I can't assume that everybody's going to go buy a new car or not buy a new car or whatever. So, that-
I agree.
So, we really can't answer on an individual basis. Yours, your portion may be, over a year's period of time, $100, where the person that goes buys a new boat, a new car, would certainly be much larger. So, that's, that's why, you know, Commissioner Melvin, I, none of us can answer you what it's going to cost each person.
For an accounting professional, he or she should be able to tell the voters and the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County how much it's going to cost each person. Let's assume we all spend the same amount of money.
Making that assumption, then you'd divide the population of Santa Rosa County by $50 million, and then you'd have your answer.
So, let's see if the, if the voters of Santa Rosa County make as much money or make enough money to pay for this within four or five years. I'd like to see that information on Thursday.
Okay.
Wait a long time? Is that it?
Yeah.
There was a question that I had also. Is there any guarantee that the work is going to be performed by local contractors? We talked about this once before, making sure that local contractors had work from this.
To the extent that Florida law will allow it, we would certainly like to see that happen. But you can't restrict interstate commerce. You get yourself in trouble with the feds. I'll let the attorney answer that.
This project is going to be a big enough project that we're probably going to have to use a contractor that would be at least statewide or nationwide. So, they might be able to utilize some local, certainly local workers and, and local subcontractors. But, but that's, I don't think that we can guarantee that it's going to be all local.
I know there are contractors in Escambia County, which I would assume that's close enough to count, that are capable of doing this kind of work.
Ms. Cantu, this project is going to be built by the lowest bidder meeting qualifications. So, whoever is qualified that submits the lowest bid is going to be the contractor on this.
So, we're not considering the fact that they're a local company?
We don't have a local preference ordinance in place. We put it out for bid, and whoever comes in as the low bidder, they are typically, if they are qualified, they're the ones who is awarded the contract.
So, you could pass an ordinance that said you, you could select a local contractor if you wanted to?
Within limitations, yes.
Okay, because I've seen that before.
Yeah, we typically, though, are more concerned with the cost of the project and keeping the project cost down than we are with making sure that we have a local contractor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cantu, I also wanted to add to that, that not just the cost, but also the quality of work. There are plenty of people in the area that do quality work on many, in many different ways. I would not want to put it down to, we were only going to allow people locally to do certain projects, a project this extensive, because you could really get into trouble as far as quality of work. You wouldn't want me wiring the courthouse. I'm very confident in everything we do, but we deal with houses every day. There are people locally that do this type commercial projects, and they can do them well. But we want to make sure we get the highest quality job for the best price for the citizens of the county. I'm just like you. I like to spend my money locally, and, and I would hope that we do create some local jobs or have people that are locally working on it. But that would not be my first priority when it comes to a project this big and this important, especially from a security factor in our county.
I appreciate that. But, but what I would ask you to do is to make sure that local contractors at least have an opportunity. If you're going to restrict the contractors to a certain list, make sure that there are local contractors that are in that list.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I've asked a question about four times now about, we know there's going to be a need for a holding pond if the downtown Milton site is selected. The holding pond will have to be treated because it's so close to the Blackwater River. I would like to ask HOK if that has been considered and researched, and if it is included in the price of this, of the price of this courthouse project. And I would like to know, because it is so close to the water, will the DEP have to be involved in permitting in any way? Because that is going to be an added cost. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Duncan, would you handle that for us, please?
Yes, we are aware of that. That was factored into the calculations that H. Mark McDonald worked on for us. DEP will be involved in the permitting of it. Sorry. DEP and many other agencies will be involved in the permitting of that, and we've factored that into the calculations.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, while, Duncan, while you're up here, if you might, while you're up here, if I might ask you a question. In, in these tallies that you have, is that holding pond property or any of the five parcels we discussed previously included in these final figures?
Sorry, the, the pond on the Milton site-
Yes.
-is, is on the property that the county currently doesn't own.
Does not own?
Yes. It's between, it's between the proposed courthouse and the railroad tracks. It's on the lowest portion of the site, which is-
So, so when we, my question earlier was, you know, are these figures a worst-case scenario? So, the Milton site, the bottom line price does not include the additional cost of any additional-
All we carried was the assessed value of that property, and we know that that's not the final price on that property.
All right, okay. So, you did include $80,000, basically?
Yes.
Yeah, the number, the number is in there. It's like making soup. It's, it's in there.
I understand. I just wanted to identify that.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Matthew Hargraves, 7074 Milton Court, Milton, Florida. And I, Mr. Chairman, I understand we have moved to the second item. I do want to go back while the HOK representatives are here, and I do have a couple of questions for them about the cost they provided in their presentation. About a month ago, HOK had provided a very detailed line item site development cost estimate. And going off what I wrote down, the numbers that were presented at that time appear to be different from the site development costs that are provided in today's. Going left or right, I believe the original site development costs for the Byron property were at 2.8 million. They're now listed at 4.7. For the P Ridge property, they were around 2.1 million, now 4.3. For the downtown property, 1.5 million, now 3.2. And I was wondering if Mr. Boyd could address the differences there?
Absolutely. And as I said at the beginning, the, this is a process of building as we receive and study information. The first round of comparative cost estimates with, which went with the matrix that we developed for site selection, were comparative in that they were purely the costs of the civil engineering on the site. So, the sidewalks, the parking spaces, the stormwater, the, the utility pipes, those kinds of things. What they didn't include at that time, because we hadn't advanced the design, were things like sight lighting for the street lighting of the parking lots. They were raw costs. So, they did not include the cost of a general contractor to oversee and supervise that work. They did include some contingencies, but there was, there was a number of components. They didn't include the judge's secure parking at that time in detail. We had an allowance in there, but as we developed the drawing some more, we built that number up. So, and, and that could be said, you know, there's a series of reports out there that are public record. This is a building process, just like anything. These numbers, we're comfortable with now.
Thanks, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. We're going to keep you going back and forth. Did HOK prepare a detailed, I guess, line item list of those costs that have now been folded into this final number, such as was provided at the previous presentation? And is that available for the public?
We, we have done that. As, as I've said, we've got detailed information on a lot of these items. This came together very quickly last week, and I would, I would rather go back and scrub everything to make sure that everything is consistent before it became a public record document. It's our due diligence to you. Am I comfortable that those numbers we presented are, are good enough? I am.
When, when you're comfortable that you've scrubbed them and you can release them, we'd appreciate it if you do so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And then, second question also, and this is somewhat related to what Ms. Mahoot mentioned, and that is the issue of the holding or detention pond. At one point, I believe that HOK had discussed that there, there was a different type of pond that could be located actually fronting the Blackwater River. Is that something that's still an option? Because there is city-owned property. I know that's been discussed by the city. They would make that available if that would be something that could help the project.
I'm going to help get an engineer to help answer that one.
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Stephen White, 4106 Berry Circle. To answer your question, on the Milton site in particular-
Sir, you're going to have to speak into the microphone.
On the Milton site in particular, because of the low elevations, the proximity to the Blackwater River, we'd anticipate that we're looking at using a wet detention pond. The positioning of that pond, could it be positioned on-site? Certainly. Can it be positioned closer to the Blackwater River? Certainly. You're looking at additional costs associated with additional property acquisition to do that. Is it something that's able to be done? Certainly. Obviously, the biggest question is, do we have the property available and a large enough piece of property to fit that pond on? Typically, what you're going to find is a wet detention pond's footprint is going to be slightly larger than a dry detention pond.
So, I just wanted, and thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate the, the answer to the questions. I, I think that does address the point, which is that there is, that is a possibility, as far as the pond, that the City of Milton would be able to address that as part of cooperation with the county on that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Laurie Gallup, 1869 Flamingo Lane. I just wanted to point- I just wanted to point out, since we're talking about the actual sales tax at this portion, that as a vacation rental manager down on Navar Beach, we collect sales taxes also on all of the condominium rentals and the hotel rentals. So the tourists will actually be helping us pay for our courthouse. I think it would be really good if we could figure out what that amount would be. I think Commissioner Melvin's got a pretty good handle on what we're collecting in bed taxes, and we should be able to extrapolate a number for our citizens. But it's not all just going to come from the citizens of Navar. I mean, the citizens of Santa Rosa County, it's going to come from everyone that comes to visit our beautiful county. And I'd also like to say thank you so much for getting this far with the courthouse project. I feel like, since I moved here in '94, we've been talking about it forever, and I'm so happy to see that we can move forward with this, and I really encourage everyone to get behind the effort. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Laurie, I've had that discussion as budget chair with the budget director, and it could be as much as 35% of the total cost that's paid for by visitors or passers-through, so...
And just, and just think, when the hotel gets built on Navar Beach, the taxes that'll be coming out of that as well.
So everything lessens the burden on us, you know, the citizens of the county by, like I say, just, just everything that pours into that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Howie 90 East Milton. What happened to the proposal that the judicial center be built on in East Milton? What happened with that as a choice?
It's, it's still on there, Ms. Cantu. That's the Byram property.
The Byram property is it? Okay. And is there any problem with the new Highway 90 that's going to come through the area right about where the courthouse is? Is that going to run into the courthouse? It was difficult to tell from their maps exactly where that road was going to go. Has that been looked at?
Ms. Cantu, yeah, I was at that meeting too with DOT, and that's in a planning phase as far as which route that eventually federal highway and state's going to choose through downtown. So certainly, the idea that federal highway has of running a alternate route south of our current courthouse and north of the railroad tracks would have a great impact on this plan or this plan on their plan. So I, I pointed that out at the last meeting, and I don't know if Hatchmont McDonald's had a chance to address that with federal highways yet. I guess it would be who pulls the trigger the quickest at this particular point. I don't know how much leverage or if that would take that one route completely out of their scope of work, so...
So if we put the courthouse in where the DOT had wanted to put Highway 90, they wouldn't put Highway 90 there, they would move it somewhere else?
I, I guess, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that Hatchmont and our attorney needs to get with federal highway and talk about, because...
But that's what we're supposed to be doing, looking forward to those possibilities, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's just, Ms. Cantu, that's just one option that the DOT is looking at. There are a number of different routes that they're looking at, as I recall, and that is they briefed the board, so that'll be going through a process. This isn't the only route. The route you discuss isn't the only one they're looking at.
That's a very confusing issue, and I understand the confusion it creates. They look at every possible route, even though they know before they start that it's, it's illogical and they won't use it, but the federal law requires that they evaluate all alternatives. And they've already stated that the alternative you're referring to is one of the lower probability, lower priority alternatives, but they're going to study it, but that creates a lot of confusion. They're going to look at every possible way of bringing 90 through Milton and across that river that there is because they're required to do it.
Again...
But it doesn't, it does not mean that's what they're thinking about. They have publicly said that is the lowest priority, so...
And if we selected that site to build the judicial center, what are we going to use for a courthouse in the meantime?
Well, the architect's already stated that he can put the building, he can build the building behind the current without disrupting materially, disrupting the operations of the court, and can build it behind it, and then when it's time, we can cut the ribbon and close the old facility to open the new facility. So you just missed that discussion. We had that a month ago or more.
And, and then you, what was my question? Then you're building in a floodplain, right?
No, ma'am, you'd be building above the floodplain. That was part of the rest of the discussion. We have to get up out of the floodplain, and so you go vertically. There's ways to get out of it. You can relocate yourself from point A to point B, or you can go up, and we're talking about going up, and we'll be out of the floodplain.
But, but that is where there's flooding in the past, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's why it's a floodplain.
But you would have to build up?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you're going to have a parking area underneath the building?
That's right.
Isn't that unsafe?
Well, actually, I answered you incorrectly. That is not part of the architect's current planning.
So it's not to put the parking underneath the building?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And he's nodding in the affirmative, so he has not planned it. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move this, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here now it passes. Let's take 10 minutes, please. Mr. Cooley, I'll entertain your comments when we get back.
Let's make your way back to your seats, please. Thank you very much. We will resume with Administrative Committee Item Number Four, Discussion of Resolution Providing for Non-Binding Referendum Regarding Creation by State Legislature of a Special District for the Pace Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, you had to speak.
I'm sorry, you're correct. You, I did promise you your comments. Go ahead.
Actually, y'all didn't talk about number three yet.
Two is what you wanted to say, right?
No, I want to talk on three.
Okay.
And you hadn't talked about three yet.
All right, we're doing that right now. Okay, item number three is the discussion proposed three resolutions providing for non-binding referendum on three separate sites for the proposed judicial facility. And we sun, with the sunset, I believe we have disposed of item number three. We're up to item number four. Okay, I stand corrected. It's been a long morning. All right, item number three is discussion of proposed three resolutions providing for non-binding referendum on the three separate sites for the proposed judicial facility. And again, I would like Mr. Andrews to lead this, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the three resolutions, Florida statute's 125.01Y, I think it is, allows for and requires a non-binding referendum to be established by county government. The, the, the language of the, the ballot has the same restrictions of, of other ballot measures, which is a, a seventy-five-word limit. The best way to do that, and again, the form has to be yes and no, state the, the substance of the referendum and have a yes or no answer. In order to be able to meet those limits, the, we have three separate resolutions, one for the East Milton site, one for the Downtown Milton site, and one for the P Ridge Pace site. And the language is the best that we could do, or that I could do, in making a, a description of where the property would be located. It references the parcel ID numbers of each of the sites, which is readily discoverable on the, the property praiser's site or on the county's site. And I've, I have really no pride of, of authorship in regard to those, those descriptions, but, but they seem to fit.
Board have anything to add on this, along with Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a observation, make, on the, the one for the Byram property, might want to use eighty-seven as a reference point instead of the Blackwater River. For people coming up from the south end of the county, they may be more familiar with that. You know, that, that would be the act, the route that Navarre, people coming from Navarre would take, and a lot of people coming from Midway Gulf Breeze.
We can certainly do that.
Or either use Downtown Milton instead of the Blackwater River. We have a lot of people who don't know that Blackwater River is, is right there in Downtown Milton.
Actually, we looked for, at the, at referencing to, to the President Courthouse site, but I, I agree with you that if we say west of the eighty-seven, intersection of Highway eighty-seven and ninety, that, that describes it, that's, that's why, that's how I described the one in, in Pace, is west of Avalon, of the intersection with Avalon Boulevard. Those are, I mean, those are, are areas that everybody's familiar with.
And use the word, how are you going to fix the Milton site? What, tell me again what you?
The Downtown Milton site, it says, shall a new Santa Rosa County courthouse be constructed in Downtown Milton at a site adjacent to the existing courthouse on parcels, including, that is, the, the parcel of the courthouse and an approximate cost of?
Okay, I couldn't tell. You, you need to move your mic a little closer to you for, for everybody's purposes. I know I'm about half deaf from flying airplanes, so.
Well, I don't speak all that loudly. I'll, I'll try to, to amp it up a little bit. The, the Downtown Milton site is described as a, as a site adjacent to the existing courthouse, which I, we could say-
I think that's clear enough. I just thought, I heard something change.
No.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything they need to add?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coles first.
There's, several folks have asked me about, you know, voting for the sales tax and then voting for location. And through statute, I'd like to get an answer from county attorney. Could these non-binding referendums read, would you see, would you support a new sale, a one-cent sales tax or one percent sales tax to construct a new Santa Rosa County courthouse and then have the definition of the location always one question? So in other words, if I like it on the west side, I'm willing to support that with a penny. But if it's built downtown, or if it's built on the east side, I may not. If it's a separate question, if the one cent is a separate question, we're asking people to vote for the one cent as one question without the knowledge of where it should go. Now, my feeling is, as citizens and as Americans, we should support the majority. We know we need it. We know how we need to pay for it, and we should support a majority. But since that question's been broached by some citizens, I wanted to bring it to you.
The local option sales tax has to be a, a single yes or no, supported or not. It has a general description of the project. It indicates in the language of the ordinance that it would be in a location to be determined by referendum. And again, with the restrictions of, in, on the ballot language, that's about the best we can do. It has to be an up or down. And if we, and as far as the other ones, we can't put all three sites on one, yes, no, or maybe. It needs to be referendums for each of the sites to meet the, the language restrictions.
Like you say, it was, it was asked of me, so I wanted to bring it to this board.
Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On east side, you have one that says Downtown Milton, one that says East Milton. The third piece of property, we've always referred to, and even when you explained it to us, as the P Ridge property, can we add P Ridge to, to that so there's a clear definition? I mean, it seems, when you go across the county, there's the P Ridge site, there's the Downtown site, there's the, the Byram or East Milton site. P Ridge just puts a clear, clear definition of there's the P Ridge site downtown, and there's East Milton. I don't know if we can't do that, but, or if it can be added, but I think it would just add some clarification. As we go around and talk about pros and cons of all three sites, we're going to refer to it as the P Ridge site. When you get to the ballot language, that's not going to be on there, and maybe is clear.
Well, we can, we can add that in. We're not, we're not pushing up against our seventy-five-word maximum. I'm just not, I wasn't, I wasn't sure where P Ridge was, frankly.
And I, I agree with you. I just, as we've, as I've gone around the last month and a half, and I think everybody, we've always referred to it as the Downtown, the East Milton, and the P Ridge. And, and just for clarification, this is already something that's very confusing, I think, so I think that that would add clarification.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify a little more of the clarification, Commissioner Williamson, do you, would you still want to keep on there the description of so many miles west of Highway ninety Avalon Boulevard, but just say, you know, north of Highway, a site, at a site in P Ridge, north of, and then go into the description?
I'm not as concerned about the, the west intersection of Highway ninety with Avalon Boulevard as I am about making sure that P Ridge is, is on there. I think that that clearly defines what piece of property that we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lynch, then Commissioner Salter.
I'm from Milton, so I, I know where P Ridge is. I live in Gulf Breeze now. My neighbors don't. So I, I think the, having the geographical reference with that, Highway ninety and Avalon, you know, that intersection is important. We can still say P Ridge. Shall a new Santa Rosa County courthouse be constructed in P Ridge, at a site north of Highway ninety, at a location, you know, two miles west of the intersection?
And I think that adds clarification. I really do.
Just add that, those few words.
And that's exactly what I was getting at. I think that would be perfect.
I think that, that'd be great.
Well, then, I move this to Thursday without objection with the one, with the one caveat. Let me get this done, with the one caveat that we tighten up the P Ridge description. Mr. Cooley? And, yes, I'm sorry, the, that we tighten up the East Milton description and the P Ridge description, as we've discussed. Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Good morning, Jerry Cooley, sixty forty-nine Arty's Way. That was a nice short-arm wrestling match. I appreciate that one. I, I, I feel obligated to say something at, at this point. One, one thing, I'm certainly an advocate of public records, and I came across a public record by one of the principals involved with the P Ridge. It referred to anybody that disagreed with him as a critic. And I just want to say that I certainly wear that as a badge, but I, I would remind folks that the last time we started calling people's names, that we had two different commissioners in center, our Economic Development Team Santa Rosa was eliminated, and, and a lot of the name-calling had to do with that. I rise in opposition to the P Ridge property. Once again, I know you guys are tired of hearing my speech, but I'm going to give it one more time. It's a bad deal for the citizens of Santa Rosa County. Sixty-three dollars, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and some odd dollars an acre. It's a bad deal. One point four million dollars. It's on a road that's currently rated C. I don't like the deal. I've been to ten, today makes the eleventh meeting. The only meeting that I've missed was the one in the south end, where people overwhelmingly were in favor of East Milton, the Byram property. In the ten meetings that I've been to, one individual has walked up to this microphone and stated that they had an interest in the P Ridge property. As an, as an advocate of, of open government, I think if that deal is such, is such a great deal, if it's the, the greatest thing since sliced bread, and there's three of you up here that think it is, that it should be included on the ballot, then there should be more support coming to this microphone. I've not seen it. I've been in Milton. I've been, I've been traveling around to all the political rallies. I've taught to people from all over the county. There's no support for that. I stand here today telling you that if you put three things on the ballot, you're muddying the water. It's going to be problematic. It needs to be removed. If there was an inkling, if three people would have showed up and expressed support in it, I, I might feel differently about it. But the support is not here. You know, I continue to hear things like, well, I'm hearing something different privately. Well, to be quite honest with you, privately's not going to pay for this sales tax. Publicly is going to pay for this sales tax. And if the support is there, they need to show up at this microphone and explain specifically why I should consider fifty million dollars to go on that piece of property. I stand here today, I'm going to ask you, this is the last time, this is the last time you're going to hear about it. I have done my best to support this, but I will reiterate it again. If the P Ridge property remains on the ballot, I'm telling you right now, your tax is in danger of not passing. So I'm going to ask one more time. Some, one of the three of you step up to the plate. While I'm here, I want to acknowledge the fact that Commissioner Melvin and Commissioner Williamson made a motion to do that very thing two weeks ago. And they should be proud of that vote. I think one of the three of you need to think about this long and hard. Need to think about, do you really want to be successful in this courthouse? Because this is the defining moment on this. Bring it down to two. Let's call it a day. Myself and a lot of other people can support it, but I will not support a ballot measure with that P Ridge property on it. Thank you very much.
Matthew Hargrave, seven zero seven four Milton Court, Milton, Florida. I would like to add my voice to Mr. Cooley's voice on that particular issue. I understand that the commission, commissioners have held a vote on restricting the number of sites on ballot, and I also would like to commend Mr. Melvin and Mr. Williamson for their motion on that. I believe, as Mr. Cooley stated, that three sites does confuse issues. I think we should strive to pass, put a referendum forward that will pass, that will be funded by the county. And I am concerned that having the three sites up there when there is significant public opposition to the P Ridge site will jeopardize the tax for either of the other two sites. I have very serious concerns about that. With respect to the three versus two, or the three options separated out on the ballot, or one option, in the supporting documents for today's committee meeting, there was an email included, email chain from last Wednesday, which included an email from the Division of Elections regarding the question. And Mr. Gary Holland stated his opinion that he thought there were two options going forward, that you could have, number one, three separate measures, one for each location. Or number two, have one measure, but indicate in that measure that the voters to vote yes to only one of those three options. So my question, I guess more properly directed to the county attorney would be, is, are those two options still viable? Does the county attorney see any reason why we could not have location A, B, or C, choose one?
I think that, as the gentleman indicated in that email, that that would give rise to a lot more overvotes and would be confusing. And I think it's a lot simpler to have the three resolutions with, which makes it much easier to determine.
In, in that scenario of, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Plus seventy-five words, get a little, it gets fairly, it gets a little bit more difficult to do.
Is the primary issue, then, this, this question of overvotes? Because if, if you look at it, if you have three separate measures, you can vote yes or no on any of them, you could feasibly or theoretically have someone vote no for all options, or yes for all options. I, I think in that situation, if you have the three separate options on the ballot, you are running the risk of people overvoting, as you say, as opposed to being limited to one vote, one location. Can you, can you address from where the overvoting would be coming from in that second option?
If you overvote, if you vote, vote for two, that vote's not counted. If you have three separate options, then you have, yeah, people do have the, the ability to vote yes or no on each of those, and I think that gives you a much better sense of what the, the public sentiment is.
Understanding this is, you know, the, the hypothetical realm, but doesn't that give you the option of theoretically having everybody vote yes for each of the three options? In that situation, you don't have an option that's actually been chosen by the people. When you have the possibility of a person coming in and voting for, say, two of the three options, how do you determine if those two options tie? You don't, you don't have the way to determine, well, what is the public preference democratically expressed for the location?
Do you mind if I interject something into this? Do you mind if I interrupt you?
Please, Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Would, would instructions in the preamble help, say, select one of the following three options, and then go into the non-binding referendum? You see what I mean? To prevent, to prevent the, the possibility of an overvote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I, I think with, with the three separate questions on location, there, there aren't overvotes. Some people will be fine with a new courthouse regardless of where it's built. So they could check yes, yes, and yes. Some people will say, okay, I'm happy with it in Downtown Milton or East Milton, but I don't want the, the P Ridge location. So they'll check yes, yes, and no. So that, you, you don't have an overvote. You, you just have people expressing their preference or lack thereof. They don't have a preference. They'll, they'll, they're happy with it regardless of where it goes. So that gives, gives people the opportunity to make that distinction.
And again, I think that the concern that I was talking about is, you don't have a true expression of the public preference if you have multiple people voting for multiple options. You don't have a true selection of, this is where we're going to put our new courthouse. That was the concern I'm hoping to address with that.
If we have a tie?
Right.
I would be very surprised.
Well.
With, with as many thousands and thousands of votes as we'll have, so.
Mr. Bush and Mr. Gore were probably very surprised in two thousand as well. Didn't think it would be that close. Does, I thought somebody else was making-
Well, I would add that, I mean, if you had two sites and, and you were choosing between the two, I think you get a true, you know, side A versus side B. Adding that third, the yes or no on each one of them, to me, gets the truer vote, because there may be people that say, you know what, I want that courthouse to go downtown. That, that's what you're an advocate for. I want it to go downtown. But if it doesn't, then I think that P Ridge is better than East Milton, or, or vice versa. But having the three on the ballot, asking the yes or no the way it is, I think that that does give a truer representation, kind of, and, and that's kind of what the guy from the state had said. If it was two, I would agree with you that it was one versus the other would be the truer vote. That's just my personal opinion.
All right, so it sounds like that the preference on the commission then is to go ahead and choose three separate measures, but there is no legal reason or statutory reason why it could not be one question with a choose yes or no on each option. Is that a correct understanding?
Well, I think the seventy-five-word limit would be the statutory.
As long as it could fit in the seventy-five words.
Where are we on that? What's the word count? I haven't-
I did a brief look at the, the three individual options. It appeared there were approximately thirty words, give or take a few, for each of the separate options. So you're well under for the individual if you do it, break it out that way. As far as having it with choose one of the three locations, you know, I'd have to mess with the formatting, but I feel pretty confident it could be done in seventy-five words or less.
Okay. Appreciate, appreciate your, yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and chime in. I've, I've, I've heard from two other commissioners, and I, for a third, would keep it the way we currently have it written. So Buckley taught me law, taught me a long time ago how to count to three. So I, I feel like we, we need to stay where we're at. I like Commissioner Williamson's reason. I like Commissioner Lynch's reason. I think he gives the public the ability to make a good educated choice.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Rollo. I live in East Milton, 9250 Barney Broxton Road. Now, I've been standing right there listening to this discussion, and there's nobody more confused in this auditorium than me. Did Mitch Lynchard tell me that I had three votes, yes, yes, and no, or no, no, and no, or what? Mr. Cooley, there's no way for me to vote if Proposition Three comes up to P Ridge property. I'm violently opposed to a sales tax. There's no way for me to express that point blank, other than doing it here today. In other words, y'all have done an effective job of ruling out anything that the people say, it's a non-binding resolution, you're going to put it where you want to. But I should have their option to say, if you're going to buy property with it and put it in the P Ridge location, then I do not support a sales tax under any conditions. And I think that's important, that the people have that choice. In other words, don't keep saying parcel one, parcel two, parcel three. Don't keep confusing the issue. If you're going to do the parcels, do it any way you see fit to do it. But give me an up or down vote on a sales tax if one of them options includes buying land. I just don't think that the people will do that if they've got an option. And if you keep putting the three pieces on there, under the language you're saying, y'all have done an effective job of camouflaging it, and there ain't no telling what's going to happen. But give me the opportunity to vote no on a sales tax if you're going to buy a property for it.
Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rollo, is that what you said, last name?
Rollo.
Okay. I just wanted, I wanted to address, I wanted to address you appropriately, Mr. Rollo. You are going to have, the first question is going to say yes or no for a local option, sales tax, which you vote no on that?
That's it.
Then you could go vote yes or no, or whatever you wanted to do on the sites. It's not going to, I mean, matter, but you're going to have a clear distinction of saying, yes, I want the tax, or no, that I don't. Now, if you said yes, then you, you can choose the sites. Even if you say no, you can choose the sites. But you're going to have a clear choice of, yes, I want to pay it, or, or no, I don't.
And that wasn't clear to me up until you just said that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And the point well made on the non-binding part of the referendum. If we're going to consult the public about where it should be, it should have a bit more weight, in my opinion.
Amen.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cole.
Yeah, I would like to go through the chair and ask the attorney, one, something Mr. Rollo brought up, that I'd like to clarify. If, if this passes, I read that too, non-binding. If the citizens of Santa Rosa County choose site C, is it binding? Please?
The, the statutory language allows only non-binding referendums. There is a case out of South Florida where that it was not made clear on the ballot that it was a non-binding referendum, and the, the referendum was held to be void. So the language has to be non-binding. It has to indicate it's non-binding. If the majority of the, the citizens vote for side A, and the commission decides to put it on site B, I don't think the commission will be around very much longer.
Well, yeah, Commissioner Lynchard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But it's possible.
Well, the, the other, if I could, Mr. Rollo, the other thing, the question, the ballot question for the sales tax itself says, shall a one-cent sales tax be levied to fund the construction of a new courthouse at a location to be determined by referendum?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's a non-binding referendum, but it's tied to binding language for the sales tax. Did I lose you?
No, you ain't lost me. That's the problem.
The referendum is...
You didn't lose me. That's the problem.
The referendum is, the referendum is non-binding on the location. But then the location is directly tied to the sales tax levy.
Is that a binding resolution, the sales tax? Or is that a non-binding?
Sales tax levy is binding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And perhaps we should consider a, a separate discussion that would bind us to what the non-binding vote was. In addition, I mean, just for simplification, I know that you've explained it, but unfortunately, probably less than ten percent of Santa Rosa County is watching at home. I don't know what the percentage is, but you know, this, saying it and doing it here is not very wide distribution of that information. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
As Commissioner Lynchard pointed out, the referendum, or the, the ordinance, which is a binding ordinance, that imposes the one-cent sales tax, makes it clear that it will be at a location determined by referendum.
If you're, if you're legally comfortable that we're bound by that, I'm, I am too, but I understand that that's not clearly understood by the general public.
It's clearly, I mean, the language is there.
Yes, sir. I know, and it makes good sense to you, but you've got to remember, we're not all lawyers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We need to get a clear, good clear statement and add that to Joyce Sabota's marching orders to our website.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's appropriate, and I don't think we need a resolution to do that. Mr. Walker, if you just, if you would just be sure that, that we clarify that point that we have flogged to death is, is made clear on the website so that we get, you know, those that seek the information can find it. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
I'm Ray Slingerland, 3225 Robinson Point Road, Milton. I'm going to try to represent the group that isn't here that support the P Ridge. I think one of the reasons you haven't seen a lot of those is, when you consider the cost presentation, for example, we're only talking a million dollars difference among all of them. And that million could be attributed to the cost of land, but that's only two percent of the total budget. The fact that you consider the demographics of the people, the existing infrastructure out of P Ridge, I think the people felt comfortable that that was a viable location, and therefore it would be on the ballot for consideration. So therefore, no need to come and try to make a big presentation. Now, as to the ballot, that's a tough one. You've got yourself sort of in a box. Because I will admit, unless I know where the site is, I cannot just arbitrarily vote for a tax. I support a one-cent sales tax, and I would vote for it. And I think a lot of people are in the same position I am. Unless I know where it's going, I can't vote for it. For example, I'll have to vote no on the tax, and yet I support it. And I don't think there's any way, as I understand it, you can get around this situation and still be able to vote for three sites. So I, but I appreciate the fact that you kept the three sites on. That was well done. Thank you.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. In response to what the man that spoke just said, the reason we disagreed with the P Ridge site was the congestion in that area of town, not necessarily anything else, but that it was less congestive over on Highway 87 toward East Milton, and it would be much easier for the people in the south end of the county to get here, as well as those in the north end of the county getting to the courthouse. And I realize how difficult it is to get here every Monday and every Thursday. And I know you probably wish I wouldn't get here a lot of Thursdays or Mondays. However, I have found that a lot of things happen when nobody's around. And it's especially important if you are adamant about something, or you really are fighting for something, that you show up and express your opinion. Unfortunately, some of the people over in P Ridge have not figured that out yet. Maybe they'll figure it out from this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address, please, for the record. Yes, sir. It's one on your right. Make your red light come on. When you see a red light, your mic's hot.
Okay, thank you.
Pull it a little bit to your mouth. Raise the mic up, if you would, please, sir. Thank you. There, that way we can all hear you.
I'm Clyde Anderson, 1097 Lions Gate Lane, Gulf Breeze. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I stand to correct something. A gentleman that got up and spoke against P Ridge a few minutes ago, said that there was a vote in the south end about a location. And I've been to every meeting in the south end, and at no time, and Commissioner Lynchard, you can correct me if my memory's wrong, at no time, there was any vote of people voting for location. Nobody voted that the East Milton was their preference. The people that got up and voiced their opinion, the great majority spoke in favor of the downtown location. I just want to make that correction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Bill Wiggins, 649 Mayberry Lane, Milton, Florida. I think most of you know that I have spoken against this before, and I'm going to make this as briefly as possible. I am against the Highway 90 property. And one reason that I'm against the Highway 90 property is because there's a shadow over this property, in my opinion. This was done on the last minute it was brought up. The Highway 90 property was thrown into the mix the last minute. And then we had Commissioner Lynchard, who flip-flopped with us on the thing, and went with, you can smile all you want to, you know it's the truth, who flip-flopped here. And so we got three, three places now that we're looking at. The tax is not going to pass if the Highway 90 property is on the agenda. It's not going to pass. How many votes are we going to get on this thing? Are we going to get one, two, or when we vote on it? Can I, can I say that I'm going to vote for the buying property, and that's the only vote that I get?
You will have all three locations as an item on your ballot. So you can vote for one property, you can vote for all three, if you would like.
But you only have one vote for the, for the four different things that'll be on there, is that correct?
You will have, the first question, do you support the sales tax, yes or no?
Okay.
Second question, do you support location A, yes or no? Third question, do you support location B, yes or no? Final question, do you support location C, yes or no? So you can make a preference on each location.
Okay. Now, will this have to be a 51% vote to win, or a place to win?
No.
In other words, the, the, the place that, that, the parcel that gets the most votes wins if it's only one vote? That's wrong. That is wrong, in my opinion. I think that any piece that wins in this election should get 51% of the people voting. What you're doing is splitting the people right down the middle. And you know it when you put it on the ballot in this respect. This thing ought to be 50% plus one vote before it wins. This is the only fair way of doing it. But I understand where you're coming from and why you're doing it. But as I said, I'm against the Highway 90 property, and I'm going to vote against it if I have to vote no sales tax period. I think it's wrong, and you people knows that it's wrong the way it was done on the last night. We were supposed to vote on a piece of property on Avalon Boulevard, and we switched it like that. So I'm against it. I'll do everything I can to defeat the Highway 90. I thank you for your time.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right. That brings us to, yeah, we, I think we've moved number three, but in case I missed it, I recommend we move administrative item number three, discussion of three resolutions providing for a non-binding referendum on three separate sites for proposed judicial facility proposed. We moved that to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number four, it's discussion of a resolution providing for a non-binding referendum regarding creation by state legislature of a special district for Pace Fire Department. Mr. Chairman, in your, you've got Chief Watkins here with the Pace Volunteer Fire. And in your packet is the letter to Chief Watkins, to me, from Chief Watkins, making that request. So obviously, you would, you would need to do this like you've, you've done the other referendum questions would be, Mr. Andrews will come up with the language on that. And also, I guess this would be, much like the Navarre Resolution, it will be two specific districts that are within the fire, the, the current Pace Fire District. Just only those people within the Pace Fire would vote on this. We have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Donnie Watkins, Pace Fire Chief, 4773 Pace Patriot Boulevard. This is something that, I guess you all know how Pace is growing. And Pace Fire Department's got to grow with it. And, you know, we've been with MSBU since eight, 1989, and it's just a, we've got growing pains. And, you know, every year, you know, that's one of the things we all decided to do as these nine departments to stick together. And Mr. Williamson, before he passed away, and we talked to him a couple times, and see what his suggestions was. And it's like, we don't want to increase taxes. That's the biggest thing we don't want to do. And what we want to see done is let the people see if they want a special fire district. And this would tell us what we need to do for the future. Because Pace is growing so fast now, I need to open up another fire station on Highway 90. And if we get that new courthouse, that's going to be a bigger burden for us because of the amount of people could be there at one time. But we can handle it. We want to handle it. I think it's a good place, my opinion, okay? But it's, it's one of these things where you've got to make that decision, and we're going to let the people make the decision where we want to put it. And this is the same way I want to do here, is let the people make the decision if we can get and start a new fire district, which we're already a district. We just want to be kind of self-contained, be by ourselves, where we can generate the money that we're generating now, and stay in our department, stay in Pace. And we can use that to, you know, to overcome these monetary problems of trying to get money to get another station up. And our biggest thing now, we, we, we try to give the bigger bang for the buck, because we started ALS, and it works. It really works for us, because within the last four months, we saved four people, getting them to the hospital, and now they're out. That's what we want. We want to give them a bigger bang for the buck. And the more people I've got, you know, running these calls, the quicker we can get these people to a hospital, the quicker we can get to the scene, quicker we can mitigate the problem and get back. And that's what I'm, I'm asking you, if we can get this done, and let the people vote for it.
Commissioner Williamson.
I've just got a question about the process of it. So it would go on to a ballot for a non-binding referendum?
Yes, sir.
Then the state legislator has to pass this.
Yes, sir.
Does it come back to the people as far as specifically, because right now, we're saying, you know, mileage not to exceed 3.75. Would it then go back to the people with a specific mileage rate? I mean, how, how would this work?
What we want to do, Mr. Commissioner, is, we want to keep like we are now, a flat rate. It's just like calling Navarre. We do not want to increase it. We think if we can get it like this, we don't want to ask the people for that increase. We just want to let them vote for it, and the money that we generate in Pace stays in Pace. Because right now, when we generate the money, it goes into a big pile. And then once a year, us nine fire chiefs get together, and we try to sort it out. And it's just, every year, we're growing so fast, I need the money to keep it growing. You know, I, I need to buy a new fire truck now. But I don't have the money, because, you know, we didn't have the money in the budget, but I had to have more, more men to do this, because I got, right now, I have five on each shift. And that's covering the whole population of our district. And during that flood we had... And during that flood we had, I didn't have enough men. And all the resources we had everywhere else was gone, because everybody else had their problems. And the way I look at it, the people pays our bills, I want to take care of my people. So that's what we're asking, is to keep this in Pace District. And on our ballot, we want to make sure that people understand that we're going to keep a flat rate like it is now, the commercial rate like it is right now, and that's what we want it. We want it to be like that. We don't want, this is the language that we had to have to let people know what can, what we can do. But, you know, that's not what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, but let me ask you a question, if you don't mind, first, and then I'll yield to you. It would be very helpful to see the numbers, how much it's going to cost to build a new fire station, how many people you're currently serving, I mean, if you've got X number of firefighters and Y number of population, and yours, you know, one firefighter per whatever.
Right.
Those are the kind of numbers that assist in making a decision like this. And in addition, it's very helpful to know about any increase in manning that the new station would bring, so you need to process the station, the manning for the station, and the equipment for the station. And I think that would make it a clearer.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it would demonstrate the growth intuitively, I understand what you're saying, but I believe that would assist in decision-making. Commissioner.
Mr. Gomelion, how would this, and I, first of all, you guys do a great job.
Thank you, sir.
I, I'm so thankful that we have a fire department in the Pace community that services the people the way it does. Now, would there be an adverse effect, because right now, is it nine?
Yes, sir.
Fire departments that are the smaller communities, I guess you could say, even though Pace isn't a small, small community? How would this affect them, and would there be any type increases of anything that would, you know, occur if we did do this?
I don't know that I can give you any exact number on that. I do, I do think there would be some impact if you look at the past budgets. I don't think that's a huge number. We can get you a report and give you the breakout for the, since the inception, of exactly what that number is. But I do not believe it'd be anything that'd be insurmountable.
And I'd like to sit down, you know, with you guys as well, and speak, and come out of the fire department and everything, because it is a great service, and they're not trying to, you're not trying to build anything else. What you're saying is, what you're getting now, you want it to stay in Pace.
Yes, sir.
And not go to the general pot where that's then sent out to other parts of the county.
Right. What I'm trying to do here is put, give you kind of a plan, what we want to do. I can't build that fire station right now, we don't have the money. But what can we do? I want to, I want to try to do a five-year plan. That's what we started in MSBU when we first started as a executive group in 2007, is to get, the county commissioners asked us to come, come together and come up with some kind of plan for the future for our people in our county. Well, you know, 2007, the money dropped, and we all dropped, we lost a lot of stuff, a lot of departments had to lay off people. And as you said a while ago, you know, it's coming back up. As you know, I stay around, I keep going, they keep building subdivisions, and every time they build a subdivision, that one house, that one call, it's just, you know, it's getting big enough that we need to try to keep the money we can, so we can take care of these, these problems when we need it. We got a great bunch of guys, we all stick together, that's what y'all ask us to do, and we've been doing it. We've been working together, we work together all the time. We depend on each other. I depend on them, they depend on us. So that's one thing that, a lot of people's ask us if we do this, is number one, are you going to increase it? No, we don't want to increase it. But if we make our own district, you have, as a person, has a right to speak or run this department yourself. So that's, that's, that's another reason that we think the people, at least give them a chance, see what they think. And this, and this is just what it means, a non-binding. We can't do nothing else, and that gives us, you know, the ammunition it takes to go to the state and go through legislation to get it, if that's what it goes to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Donnie, I certainly support what the majority of people want to do, and I've always, you know, my history of supporting the fire departments and working together. But what we did on that non-binding referendum for incorporation of Navar, is they had to do a study, an independent study to prove, put that information out to the people, so they would get a straight gouge on this thing.
Right.
And I don't know that you have time to get that for the folks, to make that opinion by them, but if you do, certainly I'd support putting it on a ballot. The other concern I have, though, is why, I feel like, you know, Brad Baker needs to be voicing in on this, I need to hear from the rest of the chiefs group, because, you know, that's what we're all doing, is working together. And then one thing that did concern me is your statement about running hospital, getting people to the hospital. And we got lifeguard ambulance here doing that, and I was wondering how, I'd like to hear some input from them, because how's that affect their business model?
Well, we don't transport, all we do, we have an ALS system that we actually first respond to the call. That's, that's what we do.
When you did make a comment, we want to get them to the hospital, and that, I wanted to clarify.
Well, that's what we want, we want to get them to the hospital.
Okay, but are you going to get them to the hospital, or are you just going to get them into the ambulance?
We get them to the ambulance. That's, that's a lot of times, you know, we, we get there quicker, like I said, we have paramedics on each shift.
Well, I know, you know, you guys do first responding, but you did make the comment about you're going to get them to the hospital, and I just want to clarify that. Do you mean you're going to get them to the hospital?
No, no, we're not going to get them to the hospital. Lifeguard's going to get them, but we assist, we had to ride a lot of times in that ambulance.
And I may be the only one that heard it that way, but I want to make sure.
Well, I hope you're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Donnie, I understand what you're trying to do. My only concern is, is we're going to end up with seven, eight small little fire departments trying to fend for themselves, and I understand where you're coming from. But I would want to engage Brad Baker and some of these other folks, and let them, let them give us some direction on this as well, because a few years ago, we approved and increased the fire department in MSBU.
Right.
And that was to create leverage to some degree across the county, so the fire department in Berrydale could be able to buy new equipment and things like that as well. So I hate to see us to divide the county into seven little fire departments again, but I understand where you're coming from, but I want to hear from Brad Baker and those folks as well.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Lancher.
Not to belabor the point, but I'll, I'll chime in. I support putting this on the ballot. I think it, it brings it back to the local precincts, and the people who live in that precinct can make their own decision as to the level of service that they want. You know, we've had two tax issues on the ballot locally in the last two rounds of election, I guess. One was for a fire department out in Avalon, I think, and then one was for Midway Fire. And they were both tax increases, and they both passed. You know, and that shows you that people want good quality service, especially when you're talking about your first responders, you know, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, you guys are, you serve such a vital function. So I support putting that on the ballot, I think. Now, we may want to also, at the same time, take a look at our rural fire departments, and let's come up with a plan for funding them to an adequate level. But the Pace area has grown to the point where you may need to bring it back local. And Navar, you know, we have, they have their own, own separate district down there. Midway, we do. And I know when the Midway trucks roll, they have those trained paramedics or EMTs on every truck that rolls to a call. And if you're on the other end of that call, you're glad they're on there when they get to you. So I support putting it on the ballot, but at the same time, I acknowledge Commissioner Salter's concern, let's come up with a plan in the event that, that they do separate out and come up with their own special taxing district.
Okay. Well, recognizing this is from your district, Mr. Williamson, I will move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes.
And we'll have the resolution ready for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Donnie.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you coming, appreciate your presentation. All right. Item Number Five, it's Discussion of Previously Approved Resolution Providing for a Non-Binding Referendum Regarding Incorporation of Navar Contingent Upon Submission of a Feasibility Study. And Mr. Walker, if you would please, sir.
Ms. Gallop, this here is, you already seen the exchange of emails last week, I believe that the, you did pass the resolution, and it was contingent upon the submission of the feasibility study, I believe, by August 1 or July 31st. My understanding that they've got the study, and it'll be available shortly, I mean, Ms. Gallop, I want to speak to it. But you did caveat our contingent, the condition to vote on that.
Yes, thank you. We were hoping that the study would be finished by July 31st, but it took a little bit more time. We've got the draft study now, they're doing edits on it as we speak. It should hopefully be out this week. So we're just asking if you could extend our timeframe on actually getting the study out to the people.
Okay. Well, do you think you're going to have the study in hand this week?
This week, yes.
And how long do you, how long will the public be allowed to have it, I guess, between now and?
November 4th.
November the 4th. Okay.
Are we going to have the sales tax issue on the November 4th ballot as well? Okay. Well, there'll be enough time for everyone to study all of those issues.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Commissioner Cole.
To the Chair, to Ms. Gallop, I don't have a problem with the extension, it's just that I recall the gentleman that was here said he only needed like to the first part of July, and we said, okay, let's kind of pad it a little and give you to the end of July. Any particular thing that got ran into that, you know, that he didn't conclude that, because I've had quite a few emails.
You know how we've had the back and forth about having, you know, there's no way you can have a city without raising taxes? Well, Mr. Mazurkowicz has found that we can, in fact, fund our city without raising any taxes, but he wanted to go back to the state and make absolutely certain that there was no law that said that we had to increase our millage rate, and there's not. So, and so the study's going to come out and show that we, in fact, do not need to raise taxes to run our city.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with it, as long as it's, like I said, right to get go, it's a straight skinny for everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ira May Bruce, 7189 Wells Avenue, Navar, Florida. I noticed that, looking at the agenda for Lori's report, that on the administrative committee's agenda, that they are asking that the county pay for this study. It's my memory that the county paid for a study five, six, seven years ago. The study was flawed, and it, when they, the new committee asked the county to pay for the study, they said, no, to raise the money yourself. I've been, I've been monitoring their financial reports, and they have not raised money to pay for this, and therefore, I guess they're going to ask the county to pay for it. I feel like that if the community of Navar is interested in being a city, with the amount of money we have, and the amount of income we have, that we would have been able to raise $27,000 without a problem. If people are not willing to give the money, that tells us that more than likely, the community doesn't, is not really interested in becoming a city, and the, or they would give the money to do it. I would just like to mention that, because that's on your next page of the, and the, I would really like to see the reports. I was, I was fortunate to be able to meet with the person that's doing the study, and I think they've removed Navar Beach from the study because of some of the problems with the sewer plant and some of the other things, and there may be some other areas that, as a city, we would have to take on, that we may not want. And I don't know what his study is going to say, but I'm mostly concerned that on one page, that the study's going to be out this week, and the next page is that it is the county being asked to pay for it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I haven't changed my opinion, the group needs to raise the money. I won't approve the county paying for it. I just go ahead and interject that right now. And, Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, you know, we've extended it, we need to go ahead and give them a date specific for the study to be available.
Mr. Walker, you had a comment?
I just was going to say, there's not been any request that the county pay, pay for the study. That was done early, and the Board rejected that. I mean, the only, only thing you had about the feasibility study was making it a part of the requirement for the referendum, resolution part of the referendum. There's not been a request for the county to, to pay for it. The only, the only, only reason this is on the agenda is to, is the fact that we did not meet the resolution required that it be submitted by July 31st. They did not meet that deadline. That's, that's the only reason I brought it back to the Board, was not to lick that calf again, but just the fact that it didn't meet the condition.
Well, on the administrative committee, there's always a request that the.
Which item were you referring to?
Number one, on the administrative committee, discussion of requests from citizens to incorporate Navar for resolution providing for a non-binding referendum on August 26, 2014 ballot regarding incorporating of the area of southeast, south of East River as a city of Navar, and request allocation for the feasibility study.
That's, that's an old agenda.
That's an old agenda.
Is that an old agenda? It says May 10, 1914, 2000, May 19, 2000.
Yeah, that's May.
So that you, this is just.
That's been overcome by.
All right. I apologize to Lori, and I apologize to y'all.
Okay.
Because I've been, I've been monitoring their financial reports, and I haven't seen anywhere that they've raised enough money to pay for them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Horton at 1852 Falling Leaves Court, Navar. I just had two questions regarding the feasibility study, with the extension, how long the extension, so we do have time to, to ask questions and to research it. And a concern I have was what a letter that was attached on the agenda items regarding a letter saying that Lori was wanting to make any necessary edits. My impression was taught when, when Mr., the gentleman came from the company, he was going to give them a product. My concern is, what's going to be edited out? Is it just, you know, correctional type of corrections, or are there items that could change the content of the feasibility study? Because if you edit it and you edit out some questionable items, then that will change the whole intent of the feasibility study, and I want to make sure that we get, there's nothing illegal with that the client can dictate, but I just want to, what, what's that going to change? Are we going to look at the pure item of the feasibility study, the pure intent? That's my concern.
Thank you. That's a valid concern as well. Ms. Gallop.
Yes, in regard to edits, it would be, it's items like Hurlbert is referred to as Hurlbert Air Force Base instead of Hurlbert Field, it's asking that numbers be right-aligned, it's asking that it say US Highway 98, things that someone who's not physically a resident of the Navar area wouldn't know what these items, what these places are really called, instead of calling it the East Bay River, that it's the East River. Those are the types of edits that we're talking about. Joe Mazurkowicz would not, under any case, allow us to change his work. I can guarantee that.
Well, just for the record, it actually is Hurlbert Air Force Base, it is a separate, independent base.
Well, then we'll have to tell him to change it back. Yeah, we're going to have to have a longer deadline now.
My retirement order is from Hurlbert Reed, Hurlbert Air Force Base, if it's changed in interim, I just slept through it.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Mr. Chairman.
So we'll need a little more time now. Thank you.
Lori, hang on.
Yes.
When you say a little more time, can you give me a date?
I believe that we should be able to have it out to the public Friday, by this Friday.
Okay. Then I'd, I'd suggest that, two things, that you turn in a unedited copy and an edited copy to the county attorney, and then, and then make a date specific, like the 8th of August for the new deadline.
I'm sorry, could you, I don't understand.
Let's see, the day is the 11th, so that would be the 15th.
Yeah, 15th of August. Yeah, fifteenth of August.
Can you do the fifteenth?
It's the fifteenth Friday? Yes. August fifteenth.
And then, and then.
And as far as an unedited copy, no, I can't do that. I'd have to ask Joe Mazurkiewicz if we could do that. Because we're the committee that asked for the study. Now, had the county ordered the study, then yes, the county would own the study. But you're not paying for the study. The citizens of Navarre are paying for the study.
But we're asking you to share it with us.
The unedited, no. You wouldn't get that until you got, until we had the final study. But I'll have to ask Mr. Mazurkiewicz about that because we don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize the efforts here.
Well, I'm just saying so that there's no, see, there's already a lady that thinks, okay, you're going to take out things you don't want in there. Just, just being blunt.
Well, she's going to think that no matter what we do.
Well, to clarify that, so nobody can say that. If our attorney has handed an unedited copy and an edited copy, then if anybody asks, we could say, go ask that guy right there. Well, that, that change didn't make no difference. It was a, it was a change in one word, like you say, airfield to Hurlbert Field, whatever. He can, he, he has the ability to say, the wording of this absolutely changes nothing in the, the whole perspective of this document. And then that way, everybody's in the clear.
I understand that. But again, I'll have to go back to my committee and talk to them because they're the ones that are actually paying for the study. Now, had the county funded the study like they did last time, then yes, you would own the entire process. But no one's helping us with this. This is individual citizens all on our own trying to get this done. And I'll take Ira May's donation today. She'd go ahead and write a check so we can get this out to the people of Navarre. Thank you.
I'm just trying to help you. You say we haven't helped. I'm trying to offer some help to where nobody can make any accusations because it's, you handed it to him.
Plenty of folks are going to make accusations, Commissioner Cole. That's just the nature of this beast.
All right. Well, just trying to, try to help.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, ma'am.
Sandra, Sandra Horton, eighteen fifty-two. I would request that if you can get it unedited, then you all could do with it. Doesn't have to be published, but at least there's validating that it is, that nothing improper was changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I appreciate that. But the county is not validating this study. We requested that it be prepared for the citizens, not the county. The county's not voting on this. The citizens of Navarre are. So, if it's released, then it's released. If it's not, you can draw whatever conclusions you want. But that's between the, the committee and the, the committee to incorporate and the residents of the precincts that are going to be voting. I don't think the county needs to get in the business of reviewing or validating that study.
Right. And, and I'm not trying to do that, but it, that would seem to be a, a great solution if the company had no problem if, if, you know, it is what it is. So, but that is, you know, if somebody doesn't have anything non-being edited, I wouldn't think that would be a problem. So, okay.
All right. Well, and I remember very vividly about the first ten months of serving on this board. I, I requested some very sensitive information from a perspect, a prospective member of the industrial park. And they brought it and shared it with me confidentially. And I satisfied my own questions and came up publicly and said my questions were satisfied. So, perhaps we can get something worked out. But anyway, we need to resolve this. So, I'm going to move that we carry out number five over to Thursday morning without objection based upon Ms. Gallop's being able to produce the document to us Thursday. Well, no. How do we do that? You want, you want to Friday, we're going to go on Thursday.
Obviously, you can just do some kind of date specific in, in the, you know, to extend that condition.
Yeah.
For that, for that matter, I think we can probably get it done by Thursday.
Okay. Well, we'll move.
So, perhaps we can have it and we can present it to you on Thursday.
Okay. Let's move it to Thursday because otherwise that throws it two weeks.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. All right. So, I recommend we move this forward to a Thursday without objection with a caveat that Ms. Gallop's have that for, that document for is Thursday. And I do so without objection. Here none passes. Item number six is discussion of construction of permanent restroom facilities at Navarre Park. Commissioner, Mr. Walker, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is the matter that came up at the last meeting and, and it, as, as had been directed by the board, it was referred to Mr. Gomelian and Ms. Royals in the building inspection department. They, they here certainly can speak to it. You see in your, in your packet, Mr. Gomelian's memo to me regarding the, their review of the, the plans that were submitted and the specs. You do note that the, we noted that we do have to have to, we're required to do commercial level construction when we do and needs to be sealed by an architect or an engineer. I think one of the things that this, this particular proposal had included wood, wood construction, for example. Our, our recommendation would be obviously given the, the maintenance issues would be some kind of concrete or some kind of tile.
Sure.
Ability to wash this out.
We can do the concrete construction and then put a facade on it that makes it look however you want the exterior to look. So, we, we can, we, that's, that's an easy to fix item there.
Tony, you may want to speak to the specifics, the items that we.
Well, I think you covered, I mean, it, from the previous conversations prior to this recent thing that was brought up relative to the volunteer effort. It was the concrete. I think that was one of the main things we heard from those that do the maintenance on the building and so forth was the, the need for it to be a concrete construction. And as well as it being in, in or near the flood plain and the potential for flooding. The other items, I think that, as I noted in my memo, it would just be to, I know the board was looking to establish a budget for that. And we had, we had done, although we don't have an estimator in our office, we had done the best possible to, with building and maintenance assistance, to develop a material cost for such a project that, that information was included. And then there are a number of other issues that you would need to address as you go forward in, in the overall plan relative to the siding of the building, the utilities, availability, that sort of thing. I don't know all those details. So, I'm assuming you're going to refer that back to staff to, to kind of go in some direction to develop a, an overall plan. Obviously, what Mr. Dabney submitted the other day was a, a floor plan, if you will. And there was, that's not a complete, there, there's a lot of back to, to provide a complete set of plans. So, and, and Ms. Royals mentioned all those items that sort of are included in that. So, there's a lot of depth that's got to be developed to have a project.
There is, but this is a fantastic starting point and it's a great community effort. And Mr. Dabney also supported a, a takeoff of bill materials provided by Southern Pipe and Supply. And there was legal questions as to whether or not we could go with that or whether or not we had to put it out for, for, for bids. And I don't guess we haven't answered that yet. But, yes, sir. No, I'm, I'm speaking to Mr., Mr. Andrews.
I'm not familiar.
I'm sorry. Say it again.
Said, said not yet, no.
I still didn't understand.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. All right. Well, understand. But, yeah, we can make this work. There'll be things that we need to tweak. It's, it's, it's badly needed. It's hundred percent, hundred percent supported by the community. And it's, it's a fantastic effort. San Rosa County will gain by, by this community effort. Yeah. Sorry.
Commissioner Wester, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I, I agree with Mr. Gomelian. I think we should refer it back to staff to continue to develop the specs. The, the specs that staff has come up with in the bid, a lot more substantial than what was proposed, you know? And, and I think it's, it's the right direction. You know, our, the bathrooms that we need down there are the ones that you can go in with a pressure sprayer and hose out. And you can't do that with stick-built, you know, mason or sheet rock walls and things like that. So, it needs to be a, a concrete block or CMU building that's going to be resistant to the, to the flooding that hopefully won't come, but one may, one day may.
And we can, we can accomplish that through tiling and other things so it doesn't have to look like a concrete block.
You can, you can make it, make it look however you want. It's just the, the bones are going to be concrete. You can put whatever face on it you want.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad to hear that you're talking about doing something with the facade because we don't want just a concrete building out there. That would be ugly. It needs to go in with the aesthetic that we have achieved with the visitor information center. So, if it could match that type of look, that would be fantastic.
We can do that and still meet, meet our requirements for having a concrete building and making it nice, something that you can get in there and pressure wash. But it's, you know, it's tiled up. So, that's completely doable.
This is the gateway to the beach and so we need to have it looking good.
Yes, completely. It's completely doable. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra, you have to turn the light on. See the red light? There you go.
I'm good now.
There you go.
Sandra Horton, eighteen fifty-two, Falling Leaves Court. We, are we still on our timeline? Was the timeline now before the Butterfly House opened? Or are we still trying to get that done before then, as the next, last meeting specified?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question.
The, the timeframe to have this completed?
Talking about this line item, we're talking about the bathrooms?
The bath, yes, sir, the bathrooms.
No, we don't have a timeline yet to, to, no later than.
We had, we had put, put out some, some goals. And I think we're going to try to keep staff to, to those. I mean, they're going to, they're going to be a lot of moving parts and they're going to have to work with, with the outside people who are involved. But yes, this is a priority, I think, for, for every member of this board. And we're going to keep staff moving forward. Try to, try to keep working with our community partners and get this done as quickly as possible. But again, it's going to have, we're going to build it to the specs that we need for ease of maintenance and long-term.
Okay. And, and that's great because I know the last meeting, we were talking about a goal, I guess would have been the proper phrase. A goal of by the time the Butterfly House opened up next, you know, two thousand fifteen.
That would be nice. We're imposing on, on Mr. Dabney. The public doesn't do it deliberately, but that's the way it works out. Nobody wants to use a portalit. He's got a very nice restaurant with facilities and he very generously, just tolerates it. But we're really imposing on him. So, from that aspect, we understand that there's an urgency to it, but better done right than fast. So, we're going to get it done correctly.
I just hope that we're not talking about three years from now.
No, no.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm used to government deadlines, so that's why I press. Thank you.
We're, we're, we're just trying to keep the ball moving. Commissioner, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to James this morning and he's going to be here Thursday. His concern is, you know, of course, block construction will take longer and finding more volunteers. And I was talking about, you know, possibly using durable rock on the inside and tiling it. So, it'd still have the convenience of being able to clean it easily. So, we'll, you know, so I'm looking forward to him addressing that on Thursday.
Right. I thought he'd be here today. He had told me that.
He, he talked to me earlier and asked if he should be here today. And I told him, let's get through today and, and talk about it again Thursday. So, he didn't have to spend two days of his time up here. But that was the main concern. He, there's, you know, right in the, in the county wanting to take our time and get this done right and make it last a long time. But there's also techniques that I think would be as equivalent in construction and, and being able to keep it clean too. So.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me interject real quick. You said James will be here Thursday. I want to remind everyone, and we should have done it at the outset of the meeting, Thursday's meeting will be in the Tiger Point Community Center.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that will save you a trip. Yes, ma'am.
That's great. Thank you. Ira May Bruce again. I'm going to ask a question having to do with the restrooms and the walkover. There was a whole crew of people showed up in front of my, in my, in front of my business this week, surveying. And I asked them what they were surveying for and they said they were surveying for the walkover. Well, we're going, we're going to have a little issue there. But one of the issues that, that might be minor with the walkover is where the bathrooms are located. If the walkover is moving that fast or if they're just trying to decide what to do, I don't know. Commissioner Melvin, you were involved in that.
Yeah.
What, what timeframe? Because the property that they're looking at is my property.
I understand. There's, they've published a schedule, the right-of-way acquisition, et cetera. I have requested, and I don't know how far it's gone through FDOT, that they look at elevator towers and eliminate that huge ADA-dictated switchback that is a big, takes a bigger footprint and is more expensive than just building two freight elevator towers, one on each end, holding up the walkover. So, that's what they're surveying for, that we are in the right-of-way acquisition phase now. Construction is two calendar years away.
Okay. The, the issue I have is that the parking that we've offered, we may not be able to offer if we have a lot of construction for that on our property. The parking has always been the, the hung-up issue when I've talked to other people before about the walkovers, that there's got to be, property has to be purchased or rented for the parking during those periods. Right now, they just park everywhere.
You're talking about for community events?
For the community events. The last, the last time they had something, the, it wasn't on my property, we thought it was, but they ran over the bank's water meter. And they had several thousand gallons of water was, was gone. They didn't even know where the water meter was. It really, they, they had the water meter on my property, so.
If you, if you don't mind, I know you took out your time to get here, but this is totally off the subject of, of the bathrooms for Navarre, which is.
Well, that, that's the only thing. I, I just want, when the bathrooms are done, we need to look at where the walkway is. That was my point.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Would you turn that back out? If we get feedback if that's left on? There you go. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm not sure we need to move this to Thursday. It's, it's a discussion item. We, 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 go ahead.
Yeah, I think to keep it moving and to, and to meet the deadline, because I do think it's important that we certainly have it done by the splash tat, splash pad opening, which I think is.
Well, we'll move it to Thursday for an update so that the staff can keep us abreast of what's going on.
Need a design professional somewhere. I know that, that Mr. Dabney and that group wants to, to be involved.
He's committed verbally to several people, me among them, that he was going to, we needed raised, rate imprint plans. We get raised imprint plans. So, and he's, he's pretty, he's a pretty dynamic fellow. So, we'll, we'll see what happens Thursday. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item number seven is discussion of a letter of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars for the air governmental transfers and authorized execution of the relevant documents. Details are in your backup unless there are questions. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item number eight is discussion of assignment slash transfer of a lease of the former driver's licensed building and property at sixty-eighty-nine Old Baghdad Highway to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Again, the details are in the backup. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item number nine is discussion of a bid in the amount of one million, four hundred, no, correction, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents for the sale of county-owned property located in Patterson Town Road. Details are in the, in the back. I recommend approval. Well, I recommend move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item number ten is discussion of a five K run Saturday, November the fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, beginning at the airport and ending in East Milton Park, which will benefit the Fair Association and Veterans Memorial Foundation. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item number eleven is discussion of purchase of four replacement vehicles for the Health Department utilizing funding from the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget allocation. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Discussion of log truck restrictions on certain county roadways. I'll open this up, I guess, first of all, to Commissioner Cole, who put it on the agenda. But I'm concerned about our legal problems. Uh, Mr. Cole.
Mr. Chairman, that's why I put it. Mr. Chairman, that's why I put it on here. We've had several accidents recently with log trucks rolling over. It seems to be on curves. So I asked our County Public Works Director, Mr. Whitfield, to look into what we can do. I know we have to be fair, non-biased. You know, we can't cull out a log truck and let a, you know, another semi-truck run through there. But still, before one of our citizens gets crit, we've been real lucky. So before one of our citizens get killed by one of these, are they loading them properly? Are they using our secondary roads to escape scales or not being in sight of FDOT? What are some of the reasons, and how can we curtail it? And I asked Mr. Whitfield to possibly come up with some ideas for this board.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes, sir. I've done some preliminary research in regard to this. The county certainly can establish no-through streets. There are certain, we can, we have certain leeway in regard to weight and load descriptions, load regulations. There are some statutes that prohibit regulation or prohibition of agricultural or forestry vehicles and operations, including one that specifically says that they're entitled to go from the place of harvest to the closest processing facility. So it's going to take a little bit more research in regard to doing that. There are in place already traffic control regulations in regard to overall weight and load and load stability, which I think enforcement of those, which is not the county's responsibility, but the state Department of Transportation would probably alleviate a lot of the problems.
We might find some relief by reaching out to them and asking them to patrol the particular areas that we feel are being overused or abused, and that tends to throw the traffic other places, just like speed traps do.
Also, I believe the city of Milton has set up a meeting with DOT. I think it's something like the 19th with some of their representatives, and they've asked our transportation planner, I recommended that Mr. Whitfield sit in on that and just try to get some kind of idea of what they can do and what can be done, what can't be done, what can be and can't be done.
And, Mr. Chairman, I certainly, you know, I mean, it's an industry that's, you know, part of our county just as much as anybody is, and I'm not trying to harm anybody's way they make their living. What my concern is, is a truck that's loading in Okaloosa County, using our secondary roads to get over to the pulpwood plant and stuff, and that's, that's, that could be where a lot of the problem lies. So, you know, if they have to, you know, cut, harvest wood just north of Whiting Field and come down and come across Berry Hill because that's the route they have to take, then by all means, they should. But we just need to, we need to take a good, hard look at this. And, Avis, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add today, or...
Just that what we have historically done, as far as restricting trucks, would be placement of no-through truck zones, and we have those in some areas of the county. But you have to be very careful with those, because what you, what you don't want to do is restrict trucks from one roadway and send them to a more populated roadway. And I think Dogwood and Berry Hill, where we had the recent accident, is a good example. If you were to put a no-through truck zone, you know, to say, for instance, restrict trucks from, on Berry Hill, from Dogwood to, say, Glover Lane, well, where is that truck going to go? In all likelihood, it's going to go to Highway 90, where you even have a more populated area with more vehicles. So the, sometimes the cure may be worse than the disease in some cases. And so we just, if we were to utilize what we have historically done with no-through truck, no-through truck zones, restricting truck traffic, it needs to be well thought out, and we need to be very careful in doing that, because we've got to think ahead of where are we going to put those trucks.
I would, I would lean more toward an enforcement approach, reaching out to the local law enforcement and to FDOT for weight control, because you've got tractor trailer rigs moving our military in and out of that subdivision on, you know, on the transfer cycle. I don't know what the Navy's is, but the Air Force runs about once every four years. So somebody's moving once every four years, and somebody's coming or going out of that subdivision, more or less. So I think the enforcement end of it is the way to approach it, but it certainly is a problem, and we, we need to reach out to partners and try to facilitate it. Let's carry this forward to Thursday, and maybe by Thursday, we can get a little bit better plan of action in place. Reach out to FDOT, reach out to the sheriff and the city of Milton for enforcement.
Could we come back maybe at the second meeting in August? I think that would have gotten, the meeting would have taken place. We're not going to, I don't think, know anything different Thursday than we know today.
Well, whatever time is adequate to address the problem, you know.
Avis, does that make sense to you?
Then, yeah, that's fine. Let's make it for the next, for the next set of meetings then, and we'll dispose of that one. We'll look forward to seeing that at the next set of meetings. And so there's no action required right now today. Item number 13 is discussion stayed on Hawkins Park, okay, just north of City of Milton on Munson Highway. Mr. Walker.
This was an item Mr. Cole had asked to be on the agenda. I went ahead and Ms. Spencer found a couple of items on the, if you're not familiar with Hawkins Park, on the Internet, just to put it in your packet. It's just on Munson Highway, just maybe about a half-mile, seemed like, from Carpenter's Park to Milton. Is there an issue with it, just publicizing the fact that the park is there?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Hawkins Park has been there for a long time, and it's been through a lot of changes. But basically, it's a park more designed for handicapped folks to use. It was built by Mr. Hawkins for his son, and then given to a state agency. Through some, basically some coverage on Channel 3 News and also with our own Press Gazette, it was overgrown, not being taken care of. The budget from the state to ARC was not significant enough to maintain the park, so Ms. Smith at ARC had to relinquish that. It's a beautiful park. It has walkways out to the water where fishing can be, you know, people could fish, pavilions, playground equipment, parking area. It's just a great place, but it's getting run down. Through that, those two media articles, the Blue Knights, which are retired law enforcement officers, that motorcycle group went out there and mowed that all down, and then Tech Sergeant Covert, big old boy from Herbert Field and the maintenance group down there, they mow grass for all the people that are deployed. Well, Tech Sergeant Covert got in touch with me, and we met up there Sunday a week ago, and they'd like to add that to their list, to-do list, and more or less pick up and work with the Blue Knights and work with other folks. I'm beginning to think that community service and doing things for our community is becoming contagious after what happened with the restrooms in Navarre Park, so let's, let's keep that going. But what I'm trying to do, though, is work through Representative Broxen's office and get some sort of county control of that park. I've talked to Tammy Simmons. She has interest in having the park also under, under the auspice of the county, so we can pretty much take it under our wing, start working with these, with these, with these groups, and get this park back to where it needs to be. And I just wanted to bring the rest of the board up to date on what's happening there and, and the rest of the staff, and just try to get this park to where it needs to be for our citizens that, that need that type of facility.
Do we need to carry this forward to Thursday, or is this just information?
Just pretty much information. This time, I'll keep the board posted. Well, if I get anything, feedback from Representative Broxen's office beforehand, I'll bring it up Thursday. If not, as soon as I do, I'll put it back on the agenda.
All right. All right, so there's no action required on item number 13. Item number 14, discussion of writing off as uncollectible two Peter Prince Airport hangar accounts totaling $632.22, as recommended by the clerk of the court. Details are in the backup. This necessary from time to time. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes. Item 15 is information, public hearing items scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Thursday, August 14th, 2014. One ordinance imposing a local governmental infrastructure sales tax, infrastructure sales surtax in Santa Rosa County for construction of courthouse, and we will deal with that on the 14th. That concludes the administrative report. Next up is... Okay, you need a break?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's take five. Let's be back in place, and let's make it at 25 after just to keep the time even. Found your way to your seats, please, and we'll finish this agenda off. Next item on the list is engineer's report. Mr. Blaylock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
You have the floor.
Okay. Yes. Item number one is a discussion of a FAA grant offer in the amount of $396,266 for the rehab of the East Apron at Peter Prince Airport. This represents a 90% match, and Santa Rosa County will be responsible for 10% of the project.
Okay. Details are in the backup. Any questions from commissioners?
As soon as we get down to the desk.
Yes, sir. I recommend we move this to Thursday without exception. Here none passes. Item number two.
Item number two is a discussion of a bid award for the Villa Venise Canal dredging project. This is a placeholder. We'll be receiving those bids on Wednesday, and we'll have a recommendation on Thursday for award.
Okay. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes.
Item number three is a discussion of the change order number two with American Environmental Group for 188-day increase in the contract time and a reduction of $64,527.91. And this is relative to our recently completed landfill gas extraction system project.
I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none passes.
And finally, number four, we recommend approval of the construction plans. This should be a discussion, because they are very close this time, and we anticipate they will make the cut and be here on Thursday.
So this is placeholder for Thursday?
Yes, sir.
I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
And that concludes the engineer's report.
Here none passes. Ms. Cantu, do you have a comment you wish to make on a specific agenda item or a general comment?
Item number 12.
On number 12 from the Administrative Committee?
The one that had to do with the logging stuff?
Yes, ma'am. It's on now. It's on now.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton.
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five seventy-seven Highway Ninety East in Milton. The only way to get rid of the logging trucks going downtown is to have a road for them to use to go around. The problem with the roads used to go around, they're way out of the way, or they don't have a bridge sufficient to carry the logging trucks possibly. But that's where the part of the problem is. You could reduce the speed of the logging trucks to at least cut down their speed when they're going through town. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. Next up is Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of consolidation of the Electrical and Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Mr. Gomian, do you want to address that?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we, as you recall, several months ago, we brought forward an item, and you had public hearings relative to combining all of our building trade boards except for the electrical into one building code Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Since that time, and since Commissioner Williamson, the new Commissioner Williamson came on board, we've had additional discussions about just completing that into one board and adding the electrical tradesperson into that one board. It'd be our recommendation that the board consider doing that, get us consolidated down to just one Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And so our request would, our recommendation would be that you set a public hearing to amend the ordinance toll for that.
Any questions from the board?
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Chairman, I just wanted to add, I think this is a good idea for us to do this. It helps with the staff, too, less that they have to do for these meetings to then have two separate meetings. A lot of the things that are going to come before this board say it is specific to electrical. A lot of times, it's not necessarily a code issue. I mean, it is a code issue, but a lot of it comes down to common sense, and it comes down to business sense. And if you have across the board somebody from electrical, heat and air and plumbing, they own a business. They have that business sense. They can rely on the electrician or the plumber for the specific, you know, code answer, and then can rely on staff for that answer. So I think this is a good thing to consolidate these boards, and I just wanted to put, say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Unless there's any other discussion, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item two is discussion of the High Water Mark Initiative created by FEMA and seven other federal agencies. There is backup information in your agenda. Mr. Gomian, do you want to discuss this?
Just a note, Commissioners, the FEMA has asked and us to consider participating in this program. And this program is primarily a public awareness program. And so we wanted to bring it to the board to determine if you felt we should or should not. We would place signs in selected areas noting high water marks. I would note that if we were to include residential subdivisions, there could be some sensitivity to that from the residents. And we would want to probably consider that in our decision. But we're just, this is a public information type program, a public awareness initiative that FEMA is asking us to consider participating in.
Commissioner Cole?
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What I liked about this, well, one, you know, it doesn't cost us anything, and Mr. Whitfield's got a great staff out there for, you know, can put in our signs for us. So I don't think, see, we won't have, you know, great increasing cost in doing that. But what I really liked was the fact that this, it says here that points towards flood. This community rating ship system points, I guess you get points for it, towards flood insurance premium reductions. And will assist the citizens in purchasing their property. And those are two things we've seen in the past. Of course, premiums always are going to go up, so we can offer our citizens a reduction. But the thing I like about it is, one, their purchasing, have that ability to know, you know, where in the past, I think people have been misqued by perhaps an overzealous realtor selling something. So I really like this program.
Commissioner Melvin?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Let's move this to Thursday for further discussion. And I do agree, I think there are some sensitivities involved. So let's take a good hard look at this and then flesh it out on Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item three is discussion of acceptance of the Florida Animal Friend Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. There is no local match requirement for this grant. Adequate backup, unless there's any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes Public Services.
Public Works, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items today. The first is the discussion of elimination of working districts with distribution of paving funds utilizing percentage formula based on voting district, road miles, and population as follows. Fifty percent of the total funding divided across the five voting districts by pro rate, ratio of proportion of miles. Fifty percent of total funding divided equally across five voting districts due to population being approximately equal. And I'd like to give the floor to Commissioner Lynchard because this is something that he's spoken about at a prior meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that actually started kind of working on back in March, April timeframe. Then we had, I was going to put it on the agenda, and we had the floods, so thought we'd just wait until a later date to bring it up. But, you know, we have voting districts which are statutorily created, and then we have working districts which are not statutorily authorized. That's a creation of the county. I actually wasn't able to find any authority for the working district in our local code. It's probably in there somewhere, but I wasn't able to find it, so I don't know where it came from. And then we have these working districts that, when they were originally set up, supposedly were to put an approximately equal number of miles in each commissioner's working district. Now, the only thing the working district does is an allocation of road maintenance and paving funds. I think the working district creates more confusion among people than anything else because you have this working district, especially for the five of us, that doesn't really mean anything. So I would, and the original basis for the working district in having the same number of miles per district has been, the districts haven't been changed and updated as subdivisions were put in, new roads were built, so that we no longer have anywhere near an approximately equal number of roads per working district. So at the very least, we would need to, you know, rebalance the working districts. But I think the better approach may be just to do away with the working districts. Go back, have everything done according to the statutorily authorized voting districts. But then, take it a step further, you know, the Commissioner Salter has six hundred and some odd miles in his voting district. So he needs more money to maintain those roads than I do, or than Commissioner Melvin does down in the south end of the county. So that's why I proposed this formula that would allocate half of the road funds based on population. We each have approximately the same number of citizens in our districts. Allocate half of it based on population, half of it based on road miles in your district. Because the need for maintenance and paving funds is not just a function of the miles of roads, it's also the traffic on those roads, the wear and tear on those roads. So that would give us the figures that are in that table on that memo. That shows the approximate percentage of miles in each district, and then the total funding based on, again, using this year as a base, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we had, if next year we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that shows you what each commissioner would get for the roads in their voting district. And then we would no longer have the fiction of the working district to deal with. So I'll just throw that out there for discussion. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Cole?
The only comment I have is, Mr. Whitfield, does this look like it worked for you? Because you're the guru of roads, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. We see it as a fair way, and the fact that the only, the only funding associated with working districts currently is this funding for paving and resurfacing. This is the only thing, really, that where working districts even are considered. And so we feel like with this formula that Commissioner Lynchard has come up with, we feel like this would be a fair way to accomplish that paving, to share that funding.
That's good for me. Thank you.
I still think we should update the road miles before we distribute the money, as you said, that it's been a while since it was updated.
I don't know where we stand there. I don't know if the, if the mileage on the chart is accurate. I think the mileage on the chart's probably accurate, it's just the working district lines have not been redrawn. So there's more miles in the working districts, and they haven't been equalized.
We're going to make the working district and the voting district one and the same for each of the five of us.
Make them one and the same.
So the staff will work, the staff will work that out for us between now and, if it's not possible to do it Thursday, we can carry this forward to the next set of meetings. I don't know what your workload looks like. I don't want to impose it on you.
Well, we have all the information in the backup. You have maps of what the working district versus the voting district, and you have the, you know, the miles aren't exacts. If you look at the two charts, you've got a little bit of discrepancy between the miles in the voting and the miles in the working, but they're pretty close. I mean, that's a very small, tiny discrepancy there. And so these are, these are accurate as far as what the charts you have here, as far as the mileage you have in your working as well as your voting districts. We have that information here.
And this is something that staff could update on a yearly basis. As road miles are added into your voting district, it would adjust the percentage of funding that each district gets. But it'd be a fairly simple calculation at that point. Commissioner Williams?
And I think this takes care of one of the most confusing things that I've had to deal with over the last two months.
I think, and Commissioner Salter, I wasn't trying to foist a lot more work on you.
Commissioner Lynchard, I was hoping that you would include a helicopter in there somewhere.
Okay, so we're going to move this to Thursday without objection?
I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item number two is a discussion in the request of a no parking zone on Casa de Ora to be effective on weekdays, Monday through Friday, from six AM to four PM. Like to move to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Public Works Committee report.
Budget and Finance, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of bids received for one front mount self-propelled room for the Road and Bridge Department. Sole bidder meeting specifications is Thompson Cat Rental Store with a bid of forty-eight thousand, eighty-five dollars. Like to move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item number two is discussion of merit increase for the fiscal year two thousand and five. As your budget chairman, I've discussed this at length with our Budget and Finance Director, also with our county administrator, and feel very, very confident in the proceeds that are coming into the county and where our current revenues fall, that as your budget chairman, I'm going to recommend to this board that we move forward for a much-needed merit increase for our employees in the two thousand and fifteen budget. Now open the floor to discussion.
I agree. I've gone over the numbers with the, Ms. Bell, scrubbed them. It looks good. We're definitely on the increase, and we have to prioritize our expenditures just like anybody else does. And we have a badly needed situation here where our employees have been long-suffering. It's badly needed, it's overdue, it's the right time. So if there's no further discussion on this?
Just, anything else?
Okay. Do you have something to add to this discussion? Okay.
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five seventy-seven Highway Ninety East in Milton. I appreciate the work that the county employees put in. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, they have a paycheck when a lot of people don't. We, as taxpayers, get squeezed here, there, and everywhere, and it's always just a little bit, it's just a little bit, but after a while, it gets to be a lot. And again, I appreciate the work they do. They've always been courteous toward me and helped me, but I think a pay raise at this time, when people are still struggling just to survive, is not appropriate.
Understand your concern, and what you just said there at the end really brought it home. People are struggling to survive, and that's the reason I recommend a merit pay because it gives those that have less than five years, the people that are doing the heavy lifting in this county, a five percent increase, whereas those that have been here a longer time, a two and a half percent increase. So I feel like we're taking care of those that are, like I say, doing the heavy lifting. And of course, everybody, you know, everybody in the county works hard. But, you know, there's been those that are in a higher pay scale. My concern has always been those that are in more starting pay scales, and that's why I recommended a merit over a coal raise this year. Thank you. Move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Thank you. Item number three is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and fourteen dash one sixty in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars to repair safety netting and add a hundred and fifty feet of additional safety netting along the south side of the multipurpose field at Tiger Point Park from District Five Reserves. Do so without objection to Thursday.
Here and now it passes.
Item four is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and fourteen dash one sixty-one in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and three dollars to fund the increase in the county and state juvenile detention cost share project in the general fund. And I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item five is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and fourteen dash one sixty-two in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars to carry forward funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund and allot for the sheriff's office expenditure in the fine and forfeiture fund. Like to move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item six is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and fourteen dash one six-three in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to fund the local matches required by Section five-three-one-zero. Notification of funding for the purchase of two public transportation replacement vehicles, extended warranty, and allocates the expenditure in the grant fund. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Final item is discussion of county expenditures and check register. Mr. Chairman, that's on my desk currently, and I'll have that ready for you before Thursday for final approval, and I do so without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes Budget and Finance.
Okay. Public Forum, anybody having something to address, please? Give us your name and address.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I have a question. When someone is hired by the county, do they sign any kind of paperwork?
Mr. Walker?
When a person is hired by the county, do they sign any? I send paperwork on all the people that are hired. I'm not exactly sure what you're, are you talking about a contract?
Whatever it's called. Do they sign anything at all?
They obviously sign W twos and those sort of things, whatever the.
Okay, I'm just getting to the point of why I'm asking this question. Last Tuesday, I sent a public information request to Mr. Roy Andrews, and I asked for the following public records. Contract for assistant to Roy Andrews, who was previously employed by Roy Andrews and has been newly hired to be an assistant to Mr. Andrews in his role as Santa Rosa County Attorney. Now, can, can you tell me what you think I'm asking for in that request?
I thought you were asking for a contract, and there is none.
I think I made it perfectly clear that I was trying to find out if an assistant was brought on board to assist Roy Andrews, and I think.
Ms. Mahoot, a public records request is a request for a public record. It's not the authority, responsibility, or duty of the person responding to that request to create a record for you. If you want to, you ask for a copy of my contract, I do have a contract that was furnished to you promptly. If you ask for a public record, I'll respond completely and promptly to your request. I did it in that case, I'll do it in every case.
I, I don't agree. You knew exactly what I was asking for, and it was a blatant attempt to pull the wool over my eyes. When I ask for something, if you can read this, you know what I'm asking for. If there is no contract, say, there is no contract, the new hire has been brought on board to assist me in my work, and this is what she has made. new hire has been brought on board to assist me in my work, and this is what she is making. Don't try to camouflage what's going on here. That will not work with me. Thank you.
Jerry Cooy, 6049 Arnie's Way, and I stand before you now as a member of the First Amendment Foundation, who certainly believes in open government. Let me say welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. I think we've had a very good run here when it comes to public records. I hate there was a little hitch in the wagon on this one. I will tell you that potentially, with my studies across the state of Florida, probably 90 percent of every public records request that's ever made, the party requesting it already knows that it exists. They're just asking for a copy of it. I would like for us not to get caught up in semantics. You are an attorney, and I understand the semantics of it. I felt like it was pretty clear also. You know, let's, let's not get caught up in that. We've had a good run. Tom Danhauser, Angie Jones, you know, I requested something, I'd get a call, she'd ask for clarification, she'd send me an email, ask for clarification. Let's, I'm just saying, let's start out new. You're the county attorney. Let's, let's make every effort so that we don't, that we don't get caught up in this. You know, I'm not going to howl about it, but I think it was clear what she was looking for. Citizens don't always write in lawyer's ease. I would ask that you take your lawyer hat off just a little bit, and let's strive to think about what they're asking for in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Andrea McDermott, 8093 Sleepy Bay Boulevard, Navarre. The last Thursday meeting that you had two weeks ago, I was upset about something that I had perceived and been told that had happened with Mr. Cole. Come to find out, it wasn't as I perceived. When I got more information about it, it turns out that Mr. Cole was trying to help me resolve the issue that I was having. But there was some serious things that were going on that I did have every right to be upset about. But it was not Mr. Cole. His name was thrown in there by somebody else, and it was my mistake. And I just want to make sure Mr. Cole knows I apologized for it, and that, you know, I'd like to be clear on, when I get mad at someone, I like to make sure I'm, you know, aiming at the right direction first. And obviously, I was a little off target that day. But anyways, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Your apologies very much accepted and appreciated.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. If you don't mind, I'm going to read what I've written here. It'll make it easier. I don't lose my place. It's about water conservation. There's been a lot of discussion in a lot of places about water conservation, droughts, and forest fires everywhere that's burning up all kinds of property. And I realize we don't have it here yet, but the time will come when we have a problem with droughts and fires, just like everybody else is having. And my suggestion is we do something about it to start with, before it even starts, rather, and adapt better ways of using water, get the public in on it, not to use water to, for landscape, try to use native plants, using Pensacola State College personnel to help us figure out what's the best thing to tell people to do. But again, my suggestion is to start now, and over a period of maybe five years, we can get people to change their way of doing things so that we use less water, knowing that we can't always tell how much water is in the reservoir. And so it's a better way to conserve the water in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else need to bring anything for this board? See you, none, here and none. We are adjourned.